Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make today. Amen. Brisbane City Council acknowledges this country and its traditional custodians. We acknowledge and respect the spiritual relationship between traditional custodians and this country, which has inspired language, songs, dances, law and dreaming stories over many thousands of years. We pay our respects to the elders, those who have passed into the dreaming, those here today and those of tomorrow. May we continue to peacefully walk together in gratitude, respect and kindness in caring for this country and one another. Please be seated. I declare the meeting open. Are there any apologies? councillor Dixon.
Chair, I wish to advise that councillor Murphy and councillor Huang will be absent today and I move that they both be granted a leave of absence from the meeting.
Seconded. Has been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Gibney that councillor Murphy and councillor Huang be granted leave of absence from today's meeting. All those in favour say aye. Those against no. The ayes have it. Are there any further apologies? Councillor Chongwa.
Thank you Chair, I'd like to also submit absence for councillor Trina Massey.
Seconded. Has been moved by councillor Chongwa and seconded by councillor Johnston that councillor Massey be granted leave of absence from today's meeting. All those in favour say aye. Those against no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cassidy.
I move that councillor Griffiths be granted a leave of absence from today's meeting.
Seconded. Has been moved by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Kim that councillor Griffiths be granted leave of absence from today's meeting. All those in favour say aye. Those against no. The ayes have it. Confirmation of minutes please.
Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,771st meeting held on Tuesday the 5th of August 2025 be received, taken as read and confirmed.
Seconded. Has been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Gibney that the minutes of the 4,771st meeting of council held on the 5th of August 2025 be received, taken as read and confirmed. All those in favour say aye. Those against no. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or Civic Cabinet Chair of any of the standing committees? Councillor Toomey.
Thank you Madam Chairman. My question is to the Chair of Public Transport Committee councillor Wines. Councillor Wines, the Shrinna Council and the Chrissie-Fully Government are keeping Brisbane moving with the record investment in public transport. Could you please update the chamber on the continued success of Brisbane's new bus network and stage one of the Brisbane Metro?
Councillor Wines.
Thanks Madam Chair and thank you to councillor Toomey for his question. I know he has an ongoing interest in the improvement of public transport across the city and for in particular for his gap community. The rollout of the BNBN and the launch of the M1 Metro Line together with the existing M2 line have been great successes for the operational uplift of public transport in this city. They've seen improved travel times, they've seen reductions in congestion and they've seen an overall uplift in both capacity and potential capacity in our public transport network. I also would like to take a moment to recognise that we have the most productive and partner centred agreement we have ever had with the state government when it comes to the delivery of public transport, with the bus contract being signed, passed by this council and signed by the state government last week. It's an excellent agreement and the best of its variety, which sees a 25-75% funding split between council and the state, but also a new capacity for council to influence outcomes and improve services throughout the length of the contract. It's a great outcome for ratepayers and public transport users in particular, but also recalling that public transport is a key part of our whole transport mix. So quality public transport helps public transport users and non-users alike. This contract has seen us to be able to deliver the new bus network for Brisbane, which has seen again improved travel times, improved reliability and reductions in congestion across our entire network. Now, our city continues to grow by about 600 people per week, which means not only do we have to respond to this growth, we also have to prepare for this growth. And in many ways BNBN has helped deliver that. One of the key changes was the need to unblock congestion in key inner-city locations, in particular the inner-south busway, Victoria Bridge, the Queen Street, the Queen Street Bus Tunnel and Adelaide Street. And our work has done much of that. The significant reductions in travel time on the Victoria Bridge are well-publicised and also the significant reduction and reduction in travel time, but also the vast improvement in travel time reliability from Mater Hill to City Hall is a marker of our success. The fact that once upon a time you could lose 20, 25 minutes in that tunnel and on that bridge alone when this proposal was first ventured, now you're doing that trip in minutes and the variability between your trip and timetable is gone. And that's, that is a major success. It means more reliable public transport for south-side bus users in particular. It means people who use the metro know that it will be coming in the headways indicated. It also means that we have a significant capacity for growth, which we know is also coming, both in Brisbane but also beyond Brisbane as interest continues in places like Logan and Redlands for growth and then using our transport network. The capacity for growth is a significant one and something that is often discussed when people sort of raise how free the Victoria Bridge has become. But that freedom of movement in the bridge will allow us to put more services on as required into the future. The physical infrastructure investments that we have delivered through both the Metro Project and BNBN have meant that we've been able to deliver this. And BNBN would not have been possible without the launch of the two metro lines, which have in so many ways transformed the way people move around this city. Since the services began on the 30th of June till the 9th of August, more than 2.8 million passengers have taken either the M1 or M2 Metro Line. And that's more than 2.8 million times Brisbane residents and visitors have chosen the predictable, clean and reliable public transport offering of our new metro system. Since launching over a month ago, the M1 has carried more than 400,000 trips in that five-week period. And also, and also recalling that because of tunnel operational, tunnel operational assessments, we have only been running the M1 on weekdays. So that does not include weekend operation. So 400,000 people have used the M1 service Monday to Friday in the first five weeks of operation. The M2, which connects UQ Lakes to RBWH, has reached a six-month milestone and it too has carried more than 2.4 million trips since its launch in January. The new bus network has added 160,000 extra services each year and have laid the foundation for growth into the future.
Councillor Wines, your time has expired. Further, further questions? Councillor Kim.
My question is to the Lord Mayor. Brisbane's new bus network has caused chaos across Brisbane since it was rolled out on June 30th. Here's what some residents have had to say. The old 204 bus route used to go through the Mater Hospital precinct, but does not anymore. I selected the Mater as I could go directly to both hospital and Mater specialist offices for treatment. Straight back into the car and driving into the city after having not driven for two years, I'd rather pay the $26 daily parking than the 50 cents just to transfer three times with an extra 25 minutes minimum to my trip. My daughter goes to a north side school. She will now need to walk 1K to get a bus to a train station, to get a train to the city, to get a bus back out to the north side. A 30-minute trip is now over an hour. Your infrastructure chair said people who aren't on board with these changes are small-minded. Do you agree with him?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you for the question. We have a very good infrastructure chair. We don't always agree, but when it comes to the benefits of the new bus network, absolutely we agree. Because look, Labour can do their push polling when it comes to trying to actively find some people who are upset about the bus network. But in the reality, we know and we've been upfront about this since the beginning, that a huge number of people benefit from this new bus network. 45 million trips a year will be faster as a result of the new bus network. 85% of trips will be either faster or equivalent and 15% of trips may take longer. But the vast majority of them will only be a couple of minutes longer. And so some of the so-called examples that we've heard are very much outliers, if they are even correct. Now, I know that in the past I've been asked questions by councillor Griffiths on specific individual resident claims. I asked him to provide the details of the resident so we can get in touch and I'm still waiting. Crickets. So read what you will into that, but the reality is, yes, there are some people that have been inconvenienced by these changes, but they are very much in the minority and a small number compared to the large number of people who have benefited from these changes. And that's what it's always been about. And as we've heard from councillor Wines, people are jumping on board these services in droves. The patronage numbers are up. We've seen increases in patronage. And so if Labour wants to portray this as some kind of disadvantage to Brisbane, they can try. But the reality is very much the opposite of that. This is a good thing. This is a boost to services. This is an increase in funding for services and this is something that will now enable us to grow the network even further as we need to. If you looked at the previous bus network before the 30th of June, if you wanted to add extra services into our bus network, they would simply get stuck in a bus jam. And so that's not a good situation to have it. It doesn't allow for future growth, whereas what we will see now is the capacity for growth. And so by making these changes, we see capacity for growth. Now, having a two-seater or multi-seat journey may not be everyone's cup of tea, but it is the world-class standard for how great public transport systems operate. I don't know of any major city public transport system in the world where you are guaranteed to get exactly where you need to go with the one-seat journey. Transfers are involved and transfers open up the network to many more destinations and it allows the network to operate more efficiently. And these are the sort of things that we're seeing from the new bus network. And so as I said, Labour can do their push polling if they like. That's up to them. But we've been very upfront about the new network, the reasons for it, the benefits of it. And we've also been upfront that there will be some people that have been inconvenienced from that. We acknowledge that. And you know, of course, we wish that it was possible to have a new network without inconveniencing anyone, but I'm not, I'm not aware of a way to do that. You have to make changes to the network in order to improve it. Changes involve people changing their travel patterns in some cases and that is the reality of the situation. Now, this was never meant to be easy. When it's been tried in the past, it's always been a challenge. When it's been tried in other cities around the world, it's always been a challenge. But as far as I can see and based on the feedback that's come out and the patronage numbers, the performance stats on the network, this is a really, really good outcome and it's one that we want to keep building on. Now, services will continue to change and evolve as we go forward because that's the new agreement that we've got with the state government. And so we can continue to adapt and that's something that the new contract allows us to do. And so if there's tweaks that can be made, then we'll look at making those tweaks and working with the state government. But certainly our aim is to improve, our aim is to increase the funding together with the state government, our aim is to increase the services and that's exactly what the new bus network has done.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Gibney.
My question is for the Chair of the Community and the Arts Committee councillor Howard. Councillor Howard, the recipients of the latest round of the Lord Mayor's Better Suburbs Grants have been announced. Can you please update the chamber on how the Better Suburbs Grants will support our local clubs to grow with our city and make Brisbane's lifestyle even better?
Councillor Howard.
Well, thank you Chair and through you I thank councillor Gibney for the question. And I also understand that some of councillor Gibney's family are in the, in the gallery. And so a big hello to her mum Dale, her aunt Mish and her guest from Scotland Katie. And we're very proud of, we're very proud of councillor Gibney and all that she does for Winham. And I know that the Lord Mayor's Better Suburbs Grants are just one of the ways in which she can help her community. So one of the things of course that I love most about our city is the way that our local groups step up for their communities. And whether it's a sporting club, a men's shed or a multicultural association, these organisations are run by passionate people who give their time and energy to make Brisbane's lifestyle even better. The Lord Mayor's Better Suburbs Grants Programme is all about backing those efforts. And it's worth noting Chair that this is the biggest community grants programme ever established in the history of this council and it was this Shrinna Council that created it. Since we launched it in 2021, it's been helping hundreds of community organisations right across Brisbane to do more, reach more people and keep their facilities in great shape. The programme has two categories. The community facility category offers up to $200,000 for improvements to council community leased facilities from planning and design through to construction. The community support category offers up to $10,000 for practical targeted projects. And while it's not the kind of money that builds a new clubhouse, it's the kind that makes a real difference, helping a group replace worn-out equipment, give their space a refresh or kick-start a new programme. We know how important these organisations are to the fabric of our suburbs. That's where people meet, connect and get involved. They are the heart of our communities. In the current economic climate, it's getting harder for them to fund the things they need. And that's why the Shrinna Council is stepping up. Because when our community organisations succeed, our suburbs thrive. Since the Lord Mayor's Better Suburbs Grants Programme began in 2021, 420 groups have received more than $10 million in funding across both categories. And just this month, we awarded almost $400,000 in the latest round of the community support category, shared between 48 community organisations right across Brisbane. This is grassroots funding delivering grassroots results, the kind of practical improvements that make an immediate difference. Sangay Golf Club is getting a precision-cut mower to keep greens in top condition all year round. West Juniors Australian Football Club is installing new goal netting to safely catch every kick, mark and goal. Mount Gravat Men's Shed is upgrading workshop equipment so members can keep building, repairing and passing on skills to the next generation. The Brisbane Seniors Online will expand training resources to help older residents feel confident using technology and staying connected. The Women's Mentoring Foundation will deliver mental health and resilience workshops for women from culturally and linguistically diverse backgrounds, helping them shape strong futures for themselves and their families. The Woodturners Society of Queensland is painting the exterior of their clubhouse, giving this well-loved space a fresh welcoming look. And the St Lucia Bowling Club is rolling into the future with a new electric bowling green roller, making it easier for volunteers to maintain the perfect bowling green. Now, these are just a few examples from this round alone, improvements that residents will see and enjoy straight away. And across the city, the impact of the programme is already adding up. We've helped rugby league clubs upgrade their lighting, men's sheds expand their workshops and sporting clubs of all kinds deliver better and safer facilities for everyone to enjoy. These grants aren't just about bricks, turf or equipment, they're about the experiences that follow. The teams that get to train safely under brighter lights, the seniors bowling on a smoother green and the volunteers who feel proud of the place that they welcome people into. This is the kind of practical, hands-on support we're delivering to make Brisbane's lifestyle even better. Chair, I'd like to thank all the organisations who applied for this latest round and for the work they do every single week of the year to make our suburban, to make our suburbs even better. Because ultimately that's what the Lord Mayor's Better Suburbs Grant, Suburbs Grant is all about. And I'm pleased to announce that applicants for the next round will open soon on the 1st of September and close on the 27th of October.
Thank you councillor Howard. Further questions? Councillor Chongwa.
Thank you Chair. My question's to Lord Mayor on flooding and Amendment V. Lord Mayor, through the Chair, 10,000 properties are being added to the flood overlay maps along Ithaca Creek, Nogga Creek and Breakfast Creek and another 2,726 properties are having their flood risk classification increased. This is unprecedented number of properties being added to flood risk maps. From one study, has been hiding from the public and myself as a councillor since October last year, the month of the Queensland state elections. This administration's ongoing development strategy of promoting building in high-risk flood zones is resulting in insurance premiums skyrocketing for people in flood risk areas, premiums that many will be unable to afford. To be clear, there is no question that we support housing development across the city, just not in high-risk flood zones. Lord Mayor, through the Chair, why has this LNP administration continued to promote high-density development in these high-flood risk areas, knowing full well that tens of thousands of people will see massive insurance premiums with many unable to afford them and others uninsurable at all?
Lord Mayor.
Just in relation to this particular question, look, I don't accept the premise of the question, but I'm more than happy to talk about the flood mapping changes. And we have a commitment to continuing to update our flood modelling and flood mapping. And as the city grows and changes and as we get more information, this is a really important tool that we believe it's essential that residents get access to. Now, the flood mapping that is coming through in the submission today was actually updated in our system and available to residents in October last year. Sorry, it was, it was October last year. And so that's been available on the, for any resident to search. And what we're doing today is formalising that, those changes in the city plan. And so it's a two-stage process. And so residents have been able to get access to their property flood mapping information since last year as part of our ongoing updating of this process. But the claim about thousands of extra residents living in high-risk flood zones is quite misleading because ultimately there's a large part of the city that is a high-risk flood zone, but your actual risk depends on the kind of building that you're living in, the kind of structure or house that you're living in. And so for example, the CBD, the Brisbane CBD, 60% of the Brisbane CBD is a high-risk flood zone. And so yes, you, what that means is that they're likely to get flooding in the basements of buildings in the CBD and those sort of situations, but apartments are not getting flooded. And if the building has been designed well, in a resilient manner, according with our expectations, then the services will be located above the flood levels. The buildings will be resilient and be able to bounce back quicker. And there is actually limited impact in those sort of circumstances on people's living areas. Whereas if you have an older style dwelling such as a Queensland a house or a house on a slab on the ground, obviously it's a different story. And so having new high-rise buildings in a high-risk flood zone is something that can be, as we've seen in the CBD example, can be managed well if the design is done right. And so just because the Brisbane CBD or a big part of it is a high-risk flood zone does not mean that you should not be able to build anything in the Brisbane CBD. I think everyone would accept that it's about managing the risk and it's about good building design and it's about flood resilience. And so that's the principle we've used on a citywide basis as well. And so it's easy to say that, oh, this particular area might be high-risk and that you shouldn't be able to build anything there. Well, what about the people that actually have invested their money to buy a home in that area? And if you tell them nothing else can be built there, what happens to the value of their home? It disappears overnight. Who's going to buy their home? Certainly the, the council has advocated that in certain circumstances, we should have the flood, the flood acquisition programme, which has been very successful with the state and federal governments. And we've seen several hundred properties purchased. But the sheer scale of the number of properties across Brisbane in areas that may flood are beyond the realm of any government to actually purchase all those properties. And you would see a large portion of Brisbane become a wasteland, uninhabitable, undevelopable. And that would only add further to the housing shortage that we have now. And so we're taking a practical and informed approach, a risk-informed approach, and we're ensuring that residents have the information that we have about the level of risk in different areas. But simply having an area that may be at risk of flooding should not mean that you can't build anything there. It should simply mean that you build in a responsive and resilient way so that if flooding does occur, that there's minimal impacts and that the bounce back can happen quicker, as we've seen with a lot of examples in the past. And so we will continue to make information proactively available to the residents of Brisbane. It is a dramatic change from the past when the Solly administration refused to publish that information. They didn't want anyone knowing about it. They actually had secret flood reports that were never released.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Adams.
Thank you Madam Chair. My question is to Chair of Public Transport Committee councillor Wines. Councillor Wines, we just heard about how the Shrinna Council is delivering world-class public transport with even more to come with 76 new buses to join the fleet, all of them coming with fully enclosed safety barriers. Last week however, we heard the councillor from Calvingvale Ward tell a very different story about our investment in bus operator's safety. Can you please advise the chamber of the Shrinna Council's record in keeping our buses safe for both operators and passengers alike?
Councillor Wines.
Thanks Madam Chair and thanks to councillor Adams for her question and also to her, her ongoing interest in public transport in the city. As we've discussed often, the changes and improvements to the bus network have principally occurred in that southwest area represented by and cared for by councillor Adams and I thank her for her ongoing interest. Now, there was an interesting debate last week about safety and conditions for our bus operators. And it was also a matter of great interest over the last month. And there was also a meeting last week with myself, the Minister for Transport and his team, the Director General, representatives of Translink, representatives from the TWU, representatives from the RTBU and representatives from non-government bus providers. And that was about in so many ways about improving, about how we can all work together to improve the safety and conditions of our bus operators. And as, I think it's important to say now that the safety and wellbeing of our bus operators is a prime concern of this council and something we spend a lot of time and effort ensuring that they are safe at work and they have safe conditions and also quality conditions. There was an interesting moment when the minister asked the representatives of the RTBU how they felt about the conditions that bus operators found in their workplaces. As we heard, Willawong does not have a gym. So that was put to the RTBU representatives, which they said, we often find, excuse me, I'm not quoting, but effectively it was, any concerns we have, we raise directly with management and are addressed through the standard system, which they found satisfactory. That was the effect of that. Now, I have had an update because I was interested about councillor Kim's advocacy of the gym and my understanding is that they've been offered a gym, but it would have to go where the full-size competition snooker table is. So there is some conjecture about where in the, in that space it would go. But the, the conditions in Willawong are quite good as they are in many, many locations. But when you consider what the Labour Party in this place chooses to care about, I think there's few better sources than today's Questions on Notice. If I can draw the room's attention to page 14, questions 38 through 40, which speak to perspex safety barriers. Now, I can inform you and all councillors that we do not use perspex, we use toughened glass because perspex can be set on fire and toughened glass has to be dealt, to break it, it has to be dealt with in a certain way, which I will not describe. But it... But that is the level of detail and commitment the Labor Council is in this place show to the safety and conditions of the operators here. They don't even know what these full screens are made of. They don't bother to care to know, which says to me that all they really care about is coming into this room and blaming us for things. And I think in so many ways, that is the story of Jared Cassidy's leadership of the Labor Party. It doesn't matter, the union member doesn't matter, the frontline worker doesn't matter, what matters is the political point in this place. And it's really pretty sad that it's come to that. But in so many ways, that is the Labor story beyond here. Mark Bailey made a commitment when he was Minister for more than $60.7 million for bus safety in 2023. I can guarantee this room that nowhere near that amount of money was ever seen by this organisation or any private bus operator to improve safety on buses for operators or passengers, or for any of the toileting or rest conditions for operators outside of Brisbane city, of which there are many. My understanding is fewer than 10%, or less than 10% of that amount of money was ever dispersed. And so, while you see the Labor Party attempting to make this point about protect whole-screen protective barriers, which councillor Cassidy has been talking about for a long time, and he should know the difference, if he was sincere, he should know the difference between perspex and toughened glass, he should know what we're doing. Councillor Kim has indicated in this place that she has had a tour of Willawong where the whole-screen barriers are produced and placed. So, one would expect a higher standard of understanding about what sort of things we do to make our operators safe. That meeting we had with the Minister, that round table, I look forward to attending it again in the future. And there were important undertakings made about driver safety and how we, those five groups that were identified, will work together to improve operator's safety.
Further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, back in November 2024, you were quoted in the media as saying the state government should be responsible for the restoration of the Story Bridge, and these were the quotes. The Lord Mayor said he expected the state government to commit further funding and take a key lead on the restoration. If you look at other places in Australia where there are bridges of this scale, they're usually owned by the state government generally, they're not council bridges, Shrinka said. We recently learnt, just in the last couple of weeks, that you have not once since then requested the support of the state government in the restoration of the Story Bridge. Why?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not sure where councillor Cassidy has learnt anything from, because week in, week out, he asks a question, doesn't listen to the answer, he asks for reports, doesn't read the reports, and so I'm not sure where he learnt information from, but budget estimates, okay, right. Okay, so he's paying a lot of attention, a lot of attention to the state budget estimates, but he doesn't come to the council budget estimates, the information sessions, he's out there with a fake campaign on the Story Bridge.
Councillors, one moment please, Lord Mayor. Councillors, I ask you all to be quiet, please, particularly you councillor Cassidy, calling out. I'm speaking. I'm speaking councillor Cassidy, and I've asked everyone to be quiet, and you continue. So I do caution you, because that is unsuitable meeting conduct. Councillor Johnston, I also caution you. Everyone will be quiet while another speaker is on their feet speaking. I'll caution you twice, councillor Johnston. And a third time, so councillor Johnston, do not continue to display that conduct. Lord Mayor.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Madam Chair, as the record will clearly show, LMP councillors were loudly shouting out across the chamber repeatedly, and instead of taking action against them, you have cautioned councillor Cassidy and myself. Why are you biased in your chairing of this meeting?
That is not a point of order. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It was interesting to hear the interjections there, because councillor Cassidy doesn't want to show up to budget information sessions, he wants them to be televised. So presumably, he can sit at home in his snuggie, eating Doritos, and actually not turn up and do his job, because that's what he actually gets paid to do.
One moment, Lord Mayor.
Actually presented the budget, councillor Cassidy. Remember that time when I gave a 45-minute presentation and you ran out of the chamber?
Councillor, Lord Mayor, one moment.
I think councillor Cassidy is referring...
No, Lord Mayor, please. Thank you. Councillor Cassidy, that is your third caution, and I ask you to refrain from calling out across the chamber. You've asked your question, and the Lord Mayor is trying to answer it. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think he was referring to the time when I gave a 45-minute presentation on the budget and all of the Labor councils left the chamber to go out and run a fake campaign. But what I can say is about the Story Bridge is what I've said previously multiple times that councillor Cassidy doesn't seem to hear, and that is, we haven't asked the state government or the federal government for a specific amount of money, because we haven't completed the business case yet. And, you know, it follows that you don't ask for a specific amount of money until you have a business case, and that was very much the case with other large projects as well.
Point of order, councillor Cassidy.
Just on relevance, I didn't ask about money, I asked about support based on the Lord Mayor's public commentary from November last year about the state government taking a lead on the restoration. That was specifically what my question was about.
Thank you councillor Cassidy. The Lord Mayor is addressing your question. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, we expect both of the other levels of government to step up when it comes to caring about the Story Bridge and making sure that we have a long-term plan for its restoration. And so, I don't know why councillor Cassidy is trying to single out the state government. We expect both other levels of government. It's almost as though this is political, and so it's almost as though councillor Cassidy's question is political. He's got a newfound obsession with the state government.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Councillor Adams is clearly calling out across the chamber, I can hear her on the far side of the room, and yet you have not cautioned her for interjecting. Why are you not applying the rules fairly to her as you do to other councillors, including myself?
I do not uphold that point of order, and I do remind councillors to refrain from calling out across the chamber. Lord Mayor.
Madam Chair, how things have changed in a short period of time. Remember in the past when we would ask the state government for money, and it was a Labor state government, councillor Cassidy and his colleagues would get incensed by that. They would think it is somehow unreasonable that we would ask the state government for money. But now, how the tables have turned! And so, look, I think councillor Cassidy and the way in which he's asked the question, the type of question it is, and the fact that he hasn't listened to previous answers would indicate this is purely a political question. And so, the answer might not excite you councillor Cassidy, but we're continuing to be in touch with both the state and federal governments throughout this process. We do expect that they'll be partners with us, and we'll continue to keep them in the loop with that process as well. And in fact, I stood up with the Deputy Premier just today, and this issue came up. And I was very clear that we have an expectation that the state government will work with us on this, and we'll continue to advocate for the interests of the people of Brisbane.
Further questions? Councillor Dixon.
My question is to the Chair of the Communities and the Arts Committee, councillor Howard. Councillor Howard, the Shrinka Council is proud to support our iconic Brisbane Festival, which is all part of our commitment to making Brisbane's lifestyle even better. Can you please update the chamber on what is in store for this year's programme?
Councillor Howard.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, and through you I thank councillor Dixon for the question. In June, the Brisbane Festival 2025 programme was officially launched, and it is the most ambitious and city-shaping programme in the festival's history. From the 5th to the 27th of September, Brisbane will transform into one big stage with 106 productions, 1,069 performances, and 21 world premieres. This is Brisbane Festival at its best, bold, joyful, and made for everyone. What's even better, Chair, is that more than 40% of the events are free to attend. This year's programme is packed with large-scale spectacles, intimate performances, and community celebrations, ensuring there's something for everyone. So just some of the highlights. Brisbane serenades will be back once again, with three outdoor concerts in neighbourhoods right across Brisbane, including Pacifica Maid, Maruka Block Party, and St Lucia Serenades. The world premiere of Gems, an international collaboration between choreographer Benjamin Milpa, composer Philip Glass, artist Barbara Kruger, and designer Alessandro Satori. Baileen Mundan, a breathtaking large-scale First Nations performance by Stephen Page, staged on a floating barge beneath the night sky. Bad Nature, a bold, multi-sensory international dance collaboration between Australasian Dance Collective and club guy Anroni from the Netherlands. Night at the Parkland, outdoor concerts at Roma Street Parkland featuring Ice House, Amy Shark, Lime Cordial, Xavier Rudd, Grin Spoon, and more. Preparing Ground, a powerful new dance work from leading First Nations choreographers Marilyn Miller, Jasmine Shepherd, and Katina Olsen. And a community choir, The Musical, it will be turning everyday voices into unexpected stars. And of course, Chair, on Saturday the 6th of September, Brisbane Festival will open with one of Brisbane's most iconic events, Riverfire by Australian Retirement Trust. Now, this year's display will make history, with heavy payload pyrotechnic drones incorporated for the first time in Queensland, launching nearly 600 effects in dazzling formations. They'll join fireworks from 17 firing locations, including barges, rooftops, bridges, and the drones themselves, all choreographed to a dynamic soundtrack by Guy Webster. And that's creating one of the most innovative and spectacular shows in the world. The pre-show will once again feature thrilling aerial displays from the Australian Defence Force, including C-17 Globemasters, FA-18s, and helicopters. Chair, Riverfire is more than just fireworks, it's an economic and cultural powerhouse, attracting more than half a million people to the city's riverbanks, parks, and rooftops, filling hotels and restaurants, and supporting thousands of local jobs. This year's festival will bring together more than 2,260 artists, including over 1,400 from right here in Queensland. That's a huge boost for our creative industries and a major showcase for local talent. Chair, this year is also a milestone moment, as it will be the sixth and final festival curated by Louise Bazina. Since 2019, Louise has transformed Brisbane Festival into a celebration that is unmistakably of this city. And I might just add that this morning, we had Louise and Charlie attend our committee, and Louise was asked by one of our committee members what she would like to be remembered for, and it was about the fact that she is all about Brisbane and putting Brisbane on the map, and she certainly has done that. So showcasing world-class performances, amplifying local voices, and engaging communities in ways that we have redefined what a contemporary arts festival can be. So on behalf of the Shrinka Council, I want to sincerely thank Louise for her visionary leadership and her lasting contribution to Brisbane's cultural life. Looking to the future, Brisbane Festival's next chapter will be led by Ebony Bott, appointed as the new artistic director. So this year's Brisbane Festival will be an extraordinary celebration of culture, colour, and community, and I encourage everyone to jump online and explore the full programme and events now live on the Brisbane Festival website.
Councillor Howard, your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Collier, do you have your hand up? Yeah, thought so. Thank you. Councillor Collier.
Thanks very much. My question is to councillor Parry. The Lord Mayor seems to be claiming the responsibility of maintaining the Story Bridge falls on the federal government now council is broke. Can you please advise if the Lord Mayor has spoken to Susan Lay about federal financial support?
Councillor Parry.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I thank councillor Collier for the question, and I know she's a bit hoarse over there, so I hope she's feeling okay. There's nothing like having a horrible cold with a newborn, so I hope she's doing all right. So in terms of the Lord Mayor talking to the federal opposition leader about restoration funding for the Story Bridge, that doesn't make a lot of sense, because the federal opposition leader doesn't control the federal budget. And in the same way that the opposition in council doesn't control the council budget, and Stephen Miles doesn't control the state budget, that's not how it works. The way it also doesn't work is that you don't seek funding without getting a business case first. And so that's what we're working on at the moment.
One moment, please councillor Parry. Councillor Cassidy, as you have failed to comply with the request to take remedial action for your unsuitable meeting conduct and calling out across the chamber while others are on their feet, I warn you in accordance with section 21.6 of the meeting's local law 2001, that failing to comply with this request may result in an order being issued. Councillor Parry.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Again, councillor Adams could be heard calling out distinctly right across the chamber, so why are you not...
I do not uphold your point of order.
Why are you not applying the rules to her?
Councillor Parry. Councillors, do not call out. I do not uphold the point of order. Councillor Parry, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And as I said before, we're working through the process now to pull that business case together, so that when we do go to the federal Labor government and seek their support in helping us to fund the restoration of this iconic Brisbane asset, they will surely come with pockets full of cash in the way they did for the Tasmanian government when they funded their bridge. And I have no doubt that in the way that we've worked with the Chrissifulli government to secure a landmark transport contract, the Chrissifulli government will support us to again restore this very important iconic asset, a key freight route, the Bradfield Highway. And that is because the Shrinka Council will do it the right way. We will get the business case together, we will ensure that we have all our ducks in a row before we seek funding from other levels of government, before we invest any taxpayer funds or ratepayer funds into this project. Unlike what we have seen at other levels of government, like for example with the Gabba Stadium, where there was no business case, like the bridge to Bribby Island where there was no business case, that's Labor's way, that is not the Shrinka Council's way.
Councillors, that now ends question time. Lord Mayor, Establishment and Coordination Committee report of the 4th of August 2025.
Madam Chair, I move the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday, 4th of August 2025, to be adopted.
Seconded. Has been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the deputy mayor that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday, the 4th of August 2025, be adopted.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Cassidy.
Can I ask that clauses A, B, and C be taken seriatum for debate purposes as a group, and clause D and E to be taken seriatum for debate as a group, and clauses F and G to be taken seriatum for debate as a group? So it'll be A, B, and C together, then D and E together, then F and G together?
All for debate and vote.
Just those groups, A, B, and C together, then D and E, then F and G.
Thank you. So Lord Mayor, A, B, and C, please.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Yes, Madam Chair, and I seek the following information with respect to the Establishment and Coordination Report, namely item C, the significant contracting plan for the term-site aquatic centre redevelopment project. Could the Lord Mayor please advise the amount of funding allocated in the 2025 council budget for this project, and in any of the further forwards for this project? Because it is unclear whether or not there is funding... Because it is unclear whether or not there is funding in the budget for this, which is normally included in the papers. In relation to items F and G, again, there are statements in here saying that there are buyback blocks that are being rezoned. Could the Lord Mayor please provide a list of those? Because again, it's not clear from the supporting information which buyback blocks are being rezoned. Thank you.
Lord Mayor.
Point of order.
Point of order Counselor Chongwa.
Just also, I'd like to also put in seriatum for clause C, D, F and G separately for debating and voting purposes. Is that okay to do that?
So, so for voting only?
No, and debating.
You want to have...
C, D, F and G separately.
So we'll have A and B and then the rest separately. Lord Mayor, A and B.
Point of order Chair.
Point of order Counselor Cassidy.
Thank you very much Chair. I move the suspension of standing orders to enable me to move the following motion that this council, one, makes a funding commitment to build an SCS depot at Brackenridge and, two, engages the state government to support the building and operation of an SCS depot at Brackenridge.
Seconded. It has been moved by Counselor Cassidy and seconded by Counselor Kim to suspend standing orders. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
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 Has been called by Counselor Cassidy and seconded by Counselor Strunk. Eyes to my right, nose to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells.
Madam Chair, the noes have it, the voting being six in favour and sixteen against.
That motion is lost. Counselors, please resume your seats. Point of order Counselor Collier.
I move the suspension of standing orders in order for me to move the following motion that this council and Counselor Krista Adams encourage their friends in the state government to transfer land from Nursery Road State Special School to Brisbane City Council to use as public parkland.
Seconded.
It has been moved by Counselor Collier and seconded by Counselor Cassidy for a suspension of standing orders. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by Counselor Cassidy and seconded by Counselor Strunk. Eyes to my right and nose to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells.
Madam Chair, the noes have it, the voting being four in favour, sixteen against and two abstentions.
That is lost. Counselors, please resume your seats. Point of order Counselor Kim.
I move for the suspension of standing orders in order for me to move the following motion that this council condemns the Lord Mayor for putting party politics before people by failing to formally request funding from the LMP state government for the restoration of the Story Bridge, thereby pushing the cost onto the renters and rate payers of Brisbane.
Seconded.
It has been moved by Counselor Kim and seconded by Counselor Cassidy to suspend standing orders. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by Counselor Cassidy and seconded by Counselor Strunk. Eyes to my right and nose to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells.
Madam Chair, the noes have it, the voting being six in favour and sixteen against.
That motion is lost.
Point of order. I believe Counselor Strunk has a motion to move.
Don't uphold that point of order, Lord Mayor. Counselor Strunk.
Point of order.
Yeah, Counselor Strunk.
Yeah. Thank you. I move to suspend standing orders so that I may move the following motion that this council... Sorry, I've had a problem with my screen again. Technology, it's really good when it's well.
Do it from memory.
When it's good. Suspension of standing orders, calling upon this council to celebrate the hundredth anniversary of Brisbane City Council by collating and publishing a book commemorating the first one hundred years of Greater Brisbane.
Seconded.
It has been moved by Counselor Strunk and seconded by Counselor Cassidy to suspend standing orders. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by Counselor Cassidy and seconded by Counselor Strunk. Eyes to my right, nose to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells.
Madam Chair, the noes have it, the voting being six in favour and sixteen against.
That motion is lost. Counselors, please resume your seats.
Thank you Madam Chair. Well Madam Chair, I didn't realise it was BYO day when it comes to bring your own motions into council. One of the things that all of those proposed motions had in common is that none of the councillors had the foresight to actually lodge them on the council agenda by one P M yesterday afternoon. Maybe it was because they were at home eating Doritos in their Snuggies, I don't know. But what we see today is a new level of laziness from the opposition. They could have put all of these motions on the agenda for debate at one, or by one P M yesterday, but no. This is, you know, this is what they're doing effectively. Because they couldn't be bothered to turn up for the budget speech and the budget information sessions and now they can't even be bothered debating these motions, they just want to be able to say that we voted against those motions. But what they won't tell people is that we didn't vote against any of those motions. We voted based on the factor of urgency, which as Counselor Cassidy would well know, you have to be able to demonstrate why this issue is so important that it couldn't be put on the agenda yesterday at one P M. And so I don't think any of those issues have suddenly emerged in the last twenty four hours. In fact, many of those issues are longstanding issues that have been discussed before. But what we know is that this is a political strategy from a lazy opposition who doesn't really want to do their job, but wants to be able to misrepresent things out in the community. And so I'm sure we'll see more of that, but that's a new low. BYO motions without actually, I bet you if we agreed to debate any of these things, they wouldn't be prepared to have the debate, they wouldn't actually have the notes. And so we'll... He wasn't ready to move the motion, but apparently he's ready to debate it. But moving on. So as I always do, I just wanted to refer to the lighting up of council assets. Last night, we had another fantastic citizenship ceremony here where five hundred and seventy five people became new Australian citizens. And thank you Madam Chair for being the emcee at that event and thank you Counselor Tumi for joining us as well. And congratulations to the five hundred and seventy five new citizens. We lit up City Hall in green and gold, the Aussie colours to celebrate. The remaining assets, the Story Bridge, Victoria Bridge, Kangaroo Point Bridge and Radcliffe Place were lit up in purple to support the National Week of Action Against Bullying and Violence. Tonight, tomorrow night and Thursday night, our assets will be lit up in green to celebrate the Eka, which as you know runs until Sunday. On Friday, our assets will be lit up in white, orange and green. What are they? White, orange and green. India, that's right. The national colours of India. Because the fifteenth of August represents the end of the British rule in India and independence for India. So something to absolutely celebrate and we give our best wishes to our local Indian Australian community and we thank them for what they contribute to our wonderful city. On Saturday, our assets will be lit up in white and blue to celebrate the eightieth anniversary of the Children's Book Council of Australia. The Children's Book Council has a long legacy of promoting literacy and the love of reading for children right across the country. Finally, on Sunday, our assets will be lit up in red and white. Can anyone guess what that is? Red Cross? Red Cross, no, it's a good guess. It's the Independence Day for Indonesia and they're celebrating their seventieth anniversary of independence. Couple of days ago, on the ninth of August, our Vietnamese community celebrated a really important milestone and that was the day fifty years ago since the very first group of three hundred and twenty six refugees from Vietnam arrived in Brisbane in nineteen seventy five. This was following the evacuation of Saigon and the Allied withdrawal from the Vietnam War. The refugees were initially housed at the Weycool Migrant Hostel, then under the administration of the Commonwealth Government. The Commonwealth was supported by local volunteers from a number of charities, including Council Mark, Red Cross and St Vincent de Paul, the Salvation Army and local churches. They worked to distribute food, toys, clothing, medical supplies and assist with teaching English. As you can imagine, it would have been an incredibly traumatic experience for those three hundred and twenty six refugees to have to quickly leave their homes under the worst of circumstances. And I am proud that Australia was able to offer them and thousands more refugees a home and our nation and our city is stronger and better for it. I'm also proud that it was a liberal Prime Minister who welcomed those refugees to Brisbane and in fact, Prime Minister Malcolm Fraser visited the Weycool Migrant Hostel personally as well to make sure that there was a message of welcome, that you are important and that you are welcome here. Interestingly, as the refugees and many more settled into the community, the first thing that so many of them did was to go out, roll up their sleeves, express a willingness to work hard and they went out to search for jobs. Many worked in the Golden Circle Cannery, or otherwise known as the Pineapple Factory in Northgate. Also, the Stubby's Clothing Factory in the Valley, back when we used to make clothes in Australia. The Ingham's Chicken Factory as well in Park Ridge and the Oyster Factory in South Brisbane, when there was an oyster factory in South Brisbane. They were proud to be employed and contributing to the society and country they now call home. And so began the story of a thriving Vietnamese diaspora in Brisbane and in Queensland. And it was wonderful to be with Counselor Hutton, the Lady Meress and others to celebrate here in City Hall just recently, the seventy fifth anniversary, sorry, the fiftieth anniversary of the nineteen seventy five arrival of the Vietnamese community in Brisbane. It was very much the first non-European large group of people that came to Australia and that was a turning point in our community where we could rightly claim to be truly multicultural. And Australia and Brisbane has become increasingly more multicultural since then, but that was an important milestone and one to celebrate and I'm so grateful for our Vietnamese community and the contribution they've made to Brisbane and Queensland. In terms of the items in front of us, so item A and B, is that correct, Madam Chair, for the first tranche? So item A is the update to the Governance and Legal Services Policy, which is also related to privacy. This policy provides council staff with a summary of our legislative obligations and commitments in relation to privacy and personal information. The policy has been reviewed by our compliance team and updates have been made accordingly to reflect recent changes to state legislation which came into effect just on the first of July this year. Under state legislation, it's a requirement for council to have in place a privacy policy and by the first of July next year, a data breach policy as well, which is consistent with Queensland privacy principles. These changes included the introduction of a mandatory notification of data breach scheme applicable to all Queensland government agencies and local governments and included an adjusted definition of the term personal information, which essentially streamlines the current definition. Policy will also be updated to align with the Queensland privacy principles, including an increased scope for privacy complaints to include whether council has complied with the Queensland privacy policy requirements and other, sorry, and council's data breach assessment and notification requirements. Also includes the introduction of a response turnaround period for privacy complaints. As these are effectively implementing state legislative changes, I commend this item to the chamber. Item B, which has come up in the chamber previously, the Logan and Gold Coast Faster Rail Project and the resumption of council land by the state government. This item, yeah, sorry.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Move for an extension?
Seconded. It has been moved for an extension.
Has been moved for an extension by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Dixon. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor.
This item specifically relates to land situated at 1295 Beanley Road to, and this is land that we acquired back in 2010. The land for the widening has been formally dedicated while the remaining lot of land has previously been identified by council for disposal. So we obviously had what we needed when it came to the roadworks, but now there's another section that's required for the rail project. In September 2024, the Queensland Government resumed part of the land for the rail project. DTMR informed council that the nearby lot would likely be needed for the project. So we didn't dispose of it and instead this land has been sold to the state government for the value of. So as we would rightly expect, this compensation is included with this. This is a positive outcome for both council, the ratepayers and also the state government who needs this land. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Further speakers, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks Chair, I rise to speak on these two items for us. And it's certainly refreshing, I guess, to hear the Lord Mayor say the quiet part out loud when he thought the issue of a new SES depot on the north side or celebrating council's history or restoring the Story Bridge or getting more parkland and green space for the ratepayers and renters of Brisbane City Council are not important to him. So it's refreshing to hear that and get the Lord Mayor on record because that's what the people of Brisbane know.
Point of order, Lord Mayor.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
I note your claim of misrepresentation.
And that's what the people of Brisbane. Oh, thank you Chair, that's what the people of Brisbane know to be true about this Lord Mayor, that those things are not important to him. Also, just note Chair, the devastating answers to questions on notice we see here today about the number of physical assaults happening on our bus drivers. I was shocked that councillor Wines didn't talk about that in his answer to councillor Adams' question, I thought she was genuinely interested in that, in her question, but I realise it was actually just political.
Point of order, Deputy Mayor.
To the item, Madam Chair, if councillor Cassidy could speak to the item.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Councillor Cassidy, if you can come back to item A and B please.
Thanks Chair, thanks very much. I will, one last point, if I can push this, almost four times higher is the number of physical assaults on drivers happening in 2025 than in 2024. And that's devastating for our drivers. Now, under clause A, the update to governance and legal services policy, AP 174, as it's known, privacy policy reflecting changes to the Information Privacy Act, other legislation act passed back in 2023, implemented as we've heard on the 1st of July 2025. Changes include a single set of Queensland privacy principles and adjusted definition of personal information within them. Information or an opinion about an individual, about an identified individual or an individual who is reasonably identifiable from the information or opinion, whether true or not, whether recorded in material form or not. It's a very legalistic language that's included in there. But important nonetheless that we are protecting people's privacy and their personal information and important that we are complying with legislation. And we know that the LNP council have a bit of a testy relationship with privacy and personal information on different levels. Who could forget, of course, the case where Brisbane City Council had to pay a Redlands woman almost $14,000 in compensation because they discriminated against her while she was trying to access her personal information. Or what about this council, this LNP council's partner of choice, of course, on parking when users began receiving texts from an unauthorised source and paying for an additional service that they didn't opt into. So not a moment too soon that these legislative changes came from the state government and council is required to tighten up its protections of people's personal information. They teach you early on in business school, maybe the Lord Mayor might have learnt something or two over at the Harvard Business School when he was visiting recently on a special trip, that the more you contract out and the less direct control you have over these things, the more risk you take with people's privacy and personal information. So perhaps something to think about before we're contracting out even more council services and spending more ratepayers hard-earned on memberships of multinational organisations. Nevertheless, it is good to see that council is finally adopting the Queensland privacy principles that were first outlined back in 2023. And obviously council officers have been up to date on working on this and making sure that it is brought as soon as possible, as close as possible to the 1st of July this year. I think though, sometimes the LNP take privacy to an extreme when answering questions or responses to requests for files or requests for information, sometimes that information which should be publicly available, given it's the expenditure of ratepayers' money, should be less private and less kept under lock and key by the LNP regime here in Brisbane. But that's a whole other issue, of course. Clause B, the Logan and Gold Coast Faster Rail project, the resumption we have before us today at 1295 Beanley Road, Carribee for this project. The remaining land also outside of the resumption itself is likely to be temporarily occupied for construction purposes. We see council is entering into agreement with the state to settle compensation for both the resumed land before us today and the balance of land for its use as well. So the project itself, of course, is seeing the number of tracks between Carribee and Beanley double from two currently to four, improving frequency and reliability. So not just running more or bigger trains down an existing corridor, much like we've seen with the metro buses on existing busways, but actually increasing the amount of infrastructure that we'll see public transport services to be able to use, which future proves rail capacity on that line. $5.75 billion committed by the Australian and Queensland Governments, so good on them for getting this project underway. And it's particularly important, particularly important in the south side context that we're seeing a boost to public transport services because it is getting more difficult to navigate south side suburbs under the cuts we're seeing from this LNP regime and their new bus network. And we've seen in the deal to get the Metro Operational and the bus contract for bus services, no growth funding, no growth funding for additional suburban services. And we're going to see a reduction in the number of buses we have in our fleet, a huge reduction in fact, we're seeing 76 come online and 118 being removed and that's going to affect our ability to deliver more services in the suburbs of Brisbane under the pathetic contract that the Lord Mayor was able to secure with the state government. So this is a good project in increasing public transport infrastructure, increasing public transport services, frequency and reliability to a community that desperately needs it in the face of LNP cuts.
Further speakers.
Point of order, Chair.
Oh, sorry, sorry Lord Mayor, I forgot your point of misrepresentation.
Councillor Cassidy claimed that I said those issues raised before weren't important, that is not what I said at all. I simply said that the Labour Party was too lazy to get them on the notice paper at 1pm yesterday, which they could have easily.
Further speakers, councillor Parry.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I rise to speak on item B of the E and C report. As the Lord Mayor said before, this item refers to the resumption of council land by the Queensland Government for the Logan and Gold Coast Faster Rail project. By working with the Chrissifoli Government, we've been able to get a great deal for land that was going to be unusable for a very significant period of time. Council is the owner of this land situated at 1295 Beanley Road, Carribee, which was previously acquired by council to facilitate the widening of Beanley Road back in 2010. The portion of land required for future road purposes has since been formally dedicated and the remaining lot has been flagged for disposal. In September 24, part of this land was resumed by the Queensland Government for their rail project. They have since advised council that the remaining lot would be unable to be disposed of during the works. Council has been working with the Department of Transport and Main Roads so that this land can be used for this important project whilst ensuring council is adequately compensated for it. What this item does today is allow the state government to resume both parts of the land while compensating council as valued by an independent assessor. This is a good deal for council and it's a good deal for the state government. Council is able to generate revenue from the land that would otherwise be resumed or unusable and the state can progress this important transport project. Since getting into office, the Chrissifoli Government has helped the Logan and Gold Coast Faster Rail project get back on track. In their June budget, they announced that $600 million would be invested in the next year to start pre-construction works. The Shrima Council is supportive of improving public transport so that people can choose to leave their cars at home. We're excited that the Chrissifoli Government is delivering projects that the previous Labour Government couldn't or wouldn't get off the ground. That's why we're pleased to see this item before us here today. It is a positive outcome for our city and I commend it to the chamber.
Further speakers, councillor Johnston.
Yes, I rise to speak on item A, the update to council's privacy policy. And I'll start by saying that the way in which this item has been described both in writing in this report and by the Lord Mayor today is deceptive. The item at item A is titled update to governance and legal services policy. Now, there is no such document as the governance and legal services policy. The policy in question is the council privacy policy. Now, the first thing that that should indicate to all councillors is this administration has something to hide when it comes to this privacy policy. Now, the Lord Mayor has stood up and said today that this is reflecting a change to state legislation and that that may well be the case. But the problem and the reason that council's privacy policy is being updated today is because council officers have not been following the legislative privacy requirements in Queensland through their day-to-day practices. Now, I don't say this lightly, but there are two serious incidents that I am aware of. The first relates to a constituent of mine and the second relates to me. What has been happening is that council officers have been recording residents in the community and councillors without their knowledge, without any warning being given before they are recording. And this is contrary to the law in Queensland. It is contrary to current council's existing council policy and practice, which is that you should give a warning before you record somebody to say that you are recording them. And that is the way in which it has been my understanding in the 17 years that I've been at council, that council officers record people when they need to, to carry out their work. And they do need to for legislative purposes, enforcement purposes, there are a host of good reasons to do so. The behaviour of council officers with respect to my constituent in Oxley have been outrageous. To be repeatedly recorded without their knowledge or permission on a very serious issue directly affecting them as a household, householder is outrageous. And it is unconscionable that it has taken serious formal complaints, not only to council but to the ombudsman for council to act. Now, I know that council has finally, and this has been going on for about two years, finally done a backhanded apology to the constituent because council process, practice and the law in Queensland was not followed. I am very upset for the resident who has battled trying to get their issue fixed, which is still not fixed. And yet, on top of all of that, council has engaged in a bad faith way with this constituent in trying to resolve the matter. Now, that is absolutely unacceptable and I am very disappointed that that is the way that council has carried out its practice. And it's not the first time that it's happened or that I've had a complaint from a resident about being recorded. But the behaviour has to stop. It is happening amongst some, not all, cars officers, but the behaviour has to stop. If somebody is being recorded, the best practice is to disclose that they are being recorded and for the purpose for which it is being recorded. That is council policy, that is the legislation. And it is very disappointing that council is now racing to fix up this because a resident has had to fight for their rights under the law in Queensland. I'll end this by saying that it was unacceptable when it was done to my staff and myself. That matter has been disposed of not by a complaint by me, which I would very much like to make, but the outrageous complaint made by the council officer was dismissed. I was recorded without my knowledge and permission, as were my staff without their knowledge and permission. And if anybody thinks that it is okay to record our council staff without their knowledge or permission, or us, then there is something very wrong with that. So I feel that council has let itself down here. It is trying to hide the seriousness of this issue by calling this by another name, by downplaying why we're doing it. And it is the result of the action of a council, oh sorry, of a constituent who has stood up for his rights here in Queensland and council should do better.
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Further speakers, Deputy Mayor.
Yes, thanks, Madam Chair. I stand to rise to speak on item A. So this is amendments to council's privacy policy, AP 174, which is just an update to a suite of policies which is held and monitored by the governance and legal services policy area within council. There's certainly no conspiracy here, Madam Chair. As the Lord Mayor has said, the driving force for these updates is the Information Privacy and Other Legislation Amendment Act 2023, commonly known as the IPOL Act, which came into effect just recently on the 1st of July 2025. Council has thoroughly reviewed AP 174 to ensure it reflects the new legislative requirements that we have to meet. One of the most significant changes is the introduction of a mandatory notification of data breach scheme for all Queensland government agencies, including all local governments. The amendments also require council to establish both the Queensland Privacy Principal Policy and a data breach policy. Moving forward, AP 174 now closely aligns with the Queensland Privacy Principles, or the QPPs as they're known, which are designed to guide the management of personal information. These principles address a range of matters, including ensuring individuals' anonymity where appropriate and rules around collecting, using, disclosing and securing personal information, which I'm certain our council officers are aware of. Additionally, the definition of personal information has been adjusted to streamline and clarify its scope, making it easier for both council and our community to understand how personal details are protected. The scope for privacy complaints has also been broadened. Residents may now raise concerns not only about council's compliance with the QPPs, but also about our assessment and our notification processes and procedures that council officers follow. Further, there's a set response turnaround period for privacy complaints, providing greater certainty and transparency for everyone in our community. These amendments to AP 174 reflect changes to state legislation and are essential, Madam Chair, for aligning our internal policies with the requirements which is set out in Queensland legislation and I commend it to the chamber.
Further speakers, councillor Strunk.
Yes, thank you Chair. Listen, this particular item A in regards to privacy is, I've been listening to the debate and it occurred to me that I'd just like to say a few words in regards to the pressure that our teams and our offices are under to keep that information private. There, you know, probably a week doesn't go by that I don't hear out at the front counter someone coming in wanting to know who's living, who's lives next door, who lives up the street. You should be able to give me that information. Why can't you give me that information? And they're really under a lot of pressure in a lot of cases. And I can honestly say that in the time that I've been councillor, I don't think we've ever breached that privacy for any residents. There's a lot of domestic issues that happen within neighbourhoods and there's a lot of complaints that happen in regards to council complaints by residents on other residents. You know, it could be parking, it could be all sorts of things. And of course, we all have heard those constituents come in and say, you told my neighbour that I came in and complained, right? And of course, the team knows that that's not the case, of course, and they push back, of course. And sometimes as a councillor, you've got to intercede on their behalf to try to reduce the heat of the argument or discussion. But it is something that we always, all of us, have to be mindful of. But sometimes privacy, I think, can go a little bit too far when it comes to public safety, right? And I do remember one time, I And I, I do remember one time a resident had a problem, had, had their dog killed in front of them by another couple of dogs, much larger dogs. And that resident wanted to know which street these dogs came from so that she could keep herself safe by avoiding that area when those dogs, those other dogs were, were going to continue to be walked. And, but the privacy, the privacy policy within council would not divulge it. No, I think, I think a case could be made not to give an individual's name, not to give an individual's house, but a general area, right? So that you can keep yourself safe, right? And, and your animal's safe as well. But that, that's the only one that sort of popped up in my head over the years that I think we could have potentially dealt with that a little bit differently, right? But honestly, it's, it's something that I'm, I'm always aware of. People often ask, even in regards to developments and things like that, which we're not allowed to talk to until they, until they come, until they are made public, right? And so, you know, it's, it's, it's a challenge, it's a challenge. And I, I find that council officers pretty well have done the right thing by me and my team. I haven't had an issue, but, you know, honestly, it, it is, it is something that is more, becoming more and more important that we adhere to the, adhere to the rules of privacy. I remember back in, say, 2000, when I first started working in state government, there wasn't a lot of that, that chatter in regards to privacy so much. But over the years, over the last 25 years, it has become a real, a real thing and something that we do have to, do have to follow. Thank you, Chair.
Further speakers. No further speakers will now put A and B to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those against no, the ayes have it. That is carried. We'll now move to item C. Deputy Mayor.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Item C is the significant contracting plan for the Cherm Side Aquatic Centre. Swimming is something that locals love. It's a big part of our vibrant outdoor lifestyle. Sorry, I'll just pause for a moment, Madam Chair. Do I need to move mics? I probably do, don't I? Yes, thank you. I thought that might have been what Victor was saying. Thank you. As, as I was saying, swimming is something that locals love, Madam Chair. It's part of our vibrant outdoor lifestyle here in Brisbane. Brisbane punches well above its weight, though, when it comes to the provision of aquatic facilities for our residents. The next closest rival is actually the Gold Coast with just eight aquatic facilities. As councillor Parry knows, Cherm Side Aquatic Centre is one of our most popular pools. And initiatives like our famous $2 summer dips continue to drive demand for our aquatic centres right across the city. We also know that with more and more people choosing to live here in Brisbane and in units, apartments, and townhouses, community pools are becoming an ever more important way for families to stay healthy and active. That's why we're investing in the Cherm Side Pool now to make sure it can continue to serve the community long into the future. Expression of interest to market next Monday will occur to search for a long-term partner with council to design, build, operate, and maintain a new modern facility, adding to and building on council's investment so that we can deliver the best possible outcome for ratepayers. The revitalised aquatic centre will feature a new indoor 25-metre heated program pool with ramp and accessibility equipment, an outdoor 50-metre pool with heating and a movable swim wall, modern amenities, waterplay features, an upgraded cafe kiosk and administration area, and new plant and filtration systems. It will also have a sustainable and energy-efficient design. This will aim to create a world-class facility for our growing North Side community. Once complete, the new revitalised Cherm Side Aquatic Centre will be a very welcome upgrade for both local Olympians and novices alike. And I'm sure it will be host to many budding Olympic careers as we race towards 2032, Madam Chair, and I commend it to the chamber.
Further speakers, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I rise to speak on clause C before us here today, the significant contracting plan for the Cherm Side Aquatic Centre redevelopment project, colloquially known as the Cherm Side Pool, out of the North Side. Always, it was always a second-best option if you couldn't convince mum and dad to take you to Amazons over at Ginderley or Wet and Wild down the coast. The Cherm Side Pool when I was a kid was a very exciting place to go to, had an enormous slide that seemed a lot more enormous than it actually is these days when you were, when you were in primary school. But great memories of going to the Cherm Side Pool in, in my youth. And what we see here before us today is a multimillion-dollar amount. We're not, of course, allowed to mention the, the amount because that's being kept as commercial in confidence, subject to negotiation with, presume either the existing leasing in their bid or a new leasing, seeking a significant amount of private money to be invested into that council-owned asset. The facility is aging and population growth has, population in the catchment for the Cherm Side Pool has grown hugely since the early to mid 1990s. And if, I'm talking about going there as a kid, it must be aging that now, having gone to school in the, in the, yeah, that old, in the early 1990s. The procurement process seeks to secure a long-term operator and it'll need to be, given the many millions of dollars that will need to be invested by a private operator, 20-plus years, who will be a financial partner and who will obviously get to control design, construction, operation, and maintenance. And now, I guess this sort of raises a concern, no, it's too strong a word, a, a mild concern, I guess, in that this will be a good outcome, obviously, if an operator comes to the table and says he's $5 million, $10 million, $20 million, whatever it is in terms of investing in this facility for people to use. But in terms of a private operator being in total control of design, construction, operation, and ongoing maintenance, there obviously is a issue about whether this is still classified as a public pool. Certainly not in the sense they, they used to be a PPP pool, Public Private Partnership Pool. And certainly not a public pool in the sense that pools in Brisbane used to be, obviously. So in terms of consulting on the design and operation of the new centre, we would certainly hope that an operator would be more open and transparent than this council is in terms of consultation with community consultations. It, it should not be aligned with the sort of consultation we saw, for instance, on the, the new bus network, which saw consultation on peak hour services occurring at 11:00 AM on weekdays, when people are at work or outside peak hour times, when people are going to and from work. So it's important, obviously, that that consultation piece is right and council has some set parameters about the community having a say in what is going to be a generational asset for the North Side of Brisbane. Not just given its size and scale and what it offers, not just a local pool for the suburb of Cherm Side or the few suburbs surrounding there, it is a major pool on the North Side of Brisbane. It's important that there's, when there's a private operator receiving significant profits and somebody in business is going to make a lot of money out of this, that there's a financial return to council so we can continue to invest in addressing the challenges we're facing in terms of the sport and rec space particularly in the lead-up to Brisbane 2032. And, and the other issues as well we face as a city and as a council, congestion housing, climate resilience, waste management, and so many more. So this, this could, does have the potential to be a very, very good outcome for people who live in and around the Cherm Side area and the broader North Side as long as it is, as it is done right. Now, looking at this kind of investment we're seeing here, it's a significant amount of money, again, not allowed to say what it is. We haven't seen private, there's a privacy, of course, LNP privacy coming in again to effect, but we haven't seen this kind of investment in a long time. And I guess, you know, we'll get the LNP standing up and saying, well, that's a good thing there. We're seeing this very large sum of money going into a pool. But the, the last Sangar Pool got $3 million, from memory, in 2015, after a very long time waiting for that. And the leasing obviously put a significant amount into that project as well. But between 2012 and 2016, we saw $14 million invested in two new pools. So for that period, 2012 to 16, and, and nothing since then, nothing since 2016. It's been maintenance of existing pools. And what's happened to our population since 2016? I imagine it's gone up quite a bit, right? Don't have the exact, that exact figure here, but we hear that from the Lord Mayor all the time, 600 people a week, I think, quoting the Lord Mayor, moving here to Brisbane. So significant population growth, significant development in communities. And when we continue to talk about providing public infrastructure to go alongside development that we're seeing and population increase, this is, this is a, a perfect example. So since, since 2016, no significant investment over the last 10 years. So it shouldn't be that you just get an investment every 10 years or so when we see the kind of changes we're seeing in Brisbane as well. Now, we know the budget is tight, of course, it's tight because of the political decisions that the LNP have made here in council. But the community wants to know, and we're, we're hearing this more and more, what other projects get less because of large investments in things that rack up the, the ratepayer funded credit card to the tune of $6 billion these days. We know that the LNP treat the, the council budget as a zero-sum game, just like they do on bus services as well. Great example, sorry, we can't restore the Story Bridge because the Lord Mayor ordered a $300 million bridge to sit alongside it just down the road and $1.55 billion on an asset, the Brisbane Metro, that he's just handing away this year, writing off the asset entirely, gifting it, not even getting a dollar, not even getting a dollar for it. We just heard about the great deal, the land deal with the state government. Well, that, that's more than we're getting for a $500 million piece of transport infrastructure that's being written off in this year's budget.
Point of order.
Point of order, Deputy Mayor.
Can we talk to the actual item before us, please?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councillor Cassidy, can you come back to?
Thank you.
What's in item C, please?
Yeah, of course, Chair. So the reason we're not seeing investment over the last 10 years in pools, and it takes 10 years to see a pool upgraded, let alone a new pool delivered in, in suburban Brisbane, is because of all the things I just spoke about, is because of the waste and the largesse of this LNP regime. Now, a good example of that is councillor Strunk's been calling for a pool, just one example, for years requested the preparatory works for that new pool in his ward as part of, as far back as part of his 2018-19 budget submission to the Lord Mayor, but this council still fails to deliver for the outer suburbs. So, you know, again, marks for investing this money in the Cherm Side Pool after 10 years of stagnation when it comes to investing in community facilities like pools. But it's no great achievement in the grand scheme of things when you look at it. When you look at the level of spending on advertising, you look at the level of spending on overseas travel and catered lunches for ENC meetings, the level of spending on assets that are being transferred at zero-dollar value to other levels of government, and no real net gain for the people of Brisbane. And one pool upgrade in 10 years, it's not great, it's not great news for the people of Brisbane. So overall, overall, a, a good try, and you get some marks for that, but plenty more work to be done, plenty more work to be done in the suburbs of Brisbane if we want to genuinely increase the livability of Brisbane and make it a place like it used to be where people enjoy themselves out in the suburbs.
Further speakers, councillor Parry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I rise to speak on item C, the significant contracting plan for the Cherm Side Aquatic Centre redevelopment project, or the Cherm Side Pool. And councillor Cassidy, I also used to go to Amazons and I loved it, but I'm showing my age, I think. When I was six years old, I was in an ad for Amazons because my auntie worked at an advertising agency and she had the contract for Amazons. And I was in a floral bikini, which she wouldn't catch me in these days. Anyway, I digress. The Cherm Side Pool is a much-loved asset of the North Side community and I couldn't be happier to see this item before the chamber today. It is one of the most popular places in Marchant Ward and you only have to come on down in summer during our $2 summer dips to see how busy it is indeed. You cannot get a car parked anywhere and you can barely move in that place. And I've taken my kids there plenty of times. There is no better place to go on a hot day than the Cherm Side Pool. So this upgrade will give North Side families a bigger and better pool right in the heart of Cherm Side. That's why the Shirena Council is, and sorry, let me start again. They love this pool, and I know that they love this pool, and they're very eager to see it upgraded, which is why we're making sure that it continues to be a place for all ages to come to swim, to learn to swim, to play, or just to simply keep cool. This precinct is home to a number of different recreational organisations or groups, I suppose you could say. So you've got the Kedge and Waverly Services Club, the Cherm Side Library, Brisbane Hawthorn Hockey Centre, the Cherm Side Historical District, the Voyager Centre, and it opens onto the fabulous Seventh Brigade Park. So for an area like Cherm Side, which is one of the fastest-growing suburbs across the city, it is what I sort of have been calling locally, colloquially, sort of the Cherm Side recreational precinct. So everything is happening in that place and it's great for people of all ages and it caters to them really well. So it is a community hub and it is really important that we upgrade this pool to make it better for everybody. So we, of course, have, as I mentioned earlier, our $2 summer dips, which means during the summertime, it becomes even more popular. It is where I took my kids to learn to swim, in that learn to swim pool, and the improvements there are going to be very, very much welcomed. Although we'll never be able to avoid a code brown in a learn to swim pool, that's okay. We all get through it and it's all part of the experience. I won't, I won't go into too much detail, you should know, Lord Mayor. By upgrading this pool, by upgrading this pool, we will be able to provide families with a bigger and better pool and a place, a place to hang out together and to come together in the heart of Cherm Side. Brisbane is Australia's lifestyle capital. And it is so because the Shirena Council continues to invest in world-class facilities in our suburbs and we will continue to do so. Our pools are no exception, and I know that residents will be very excited to hear about this upgrade. And I look forward to them hearing all about it and telling them even more from today. Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Further speakers, councillor Chongwa.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak on clause C, procurement subgroup incorporating storyboard submission, significant contracting plan for the Cherm Side Aquatic Centre redevelopment project. Cherm Side Aquatic Centre is located approximately nine kilometres from the Brisbane CBD. The Cherm Side Aquatic Centre is intended to service an eight-kilometre catchment population of 250,000 people. Therefore, the surrounding community is lucky to have a pool in close proximity. The downside is this LNP administration has taken a public council pool and privatised it. The LNP administration likes to boast about their $2 summer dips for the council public pools. I could argue that our public pools should actually be free entry. However, I'm very supportive of the initiative as the cost is at least in reach to most residents. However, we know the aquatic water park is not part of that programme, perhaps because it's a water park, but also likely because it has already been more prioritised than the other council pools. Handing over public assets to a private enterprise is not in the public's best interest as the entry cost can be out of reach for many families due to rising rental and mortgage costs and the cost of living. The Greens believe everyone should be able to access all public pools and facilities without excessive travel or breaking the bank. Our community deserves access to high-quality public space for a cohesive, well-functioning city. As Brisbane expands to accommodate our growing population, we're seeing this LNP administration selling off or gifting away our public spaces to private companies or developers and new public spaces rarely being acquired. We are voting on the draft resolution to establish a lease arrangement for the Cherm Side Aquatic Centre redevelopment project by approving the submission to invite EOI's before inviting written tenders. This procurement process seeks to secure a long-term operator who would take responsibility for the design, construction, operation, and maintenance of a redeveloped centre in return for a long-term lease agreement sufficient to enable a commercial return on investment. This is more than a lease proposal, this is an EOI for a significantly expanded public-private partnership. Public-private partnerships, or PPPs, are being promoted as a win-win partnership to both the public and private sector. The argument is that these partnerships fund a project beyond what could normally be done by the public alone. This line of reasoning is a myth. PPPs are expensive, ineffective, and corruption-prone way of financing infrastructure and services with the public taking all the risks. Queens Wharf is a perfect example of why these PPPs are not in the public's best interest. Researchers who have studied this model have concluded that it is most commonly the public that loses out in the long run. that loses out in the long run. To be clear, PPPs are not the private sector coming in and spending private money instead of public money. The private sector is stepping in and taking significant public resources and public assets. Another issue is that the contracts are often hiding payments to the private company as the PPPs, that are often spread over a long number of years. Therefore, it's not replacing public spending, it's actually a contractual obligation to subsidise a particular company. Another example of why PPPs are, sorry, PPPs are such a bad idea is that the private sector is borrowing money to build the infrastructure instead of the public sector borrowing the money to build the infrastructure. The private sector pays a high interest rate than if it went through the public sector. So the public sector ends up paying a high interest rate. The LNP administration should be retaining our assets fully in public hands, investing in upgrades, maintenance and operations, rather than privatising to benefit the private sector. I will therefore be voting against this motion. Thanks.
Further speakers, councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you, I rise to speak on item C, yes, the Aquatic Centre at Chermside. I think councillor Chongwa made some reasonable points in there, I've got a slightly different perspective, but I appreciate what she's saying, and the heart of what she's saying is the model that council is putting forward here today is the wrong model. It is attempting to do two things when one should be done and then a second one. So council has decided to conflate the issuing of the new lease for the Chermside Aquatic Centre with a major redevelopment of the Chermside Aquatic Centre. Now, increasingly, council has gone down this road of essentially privatising council assets. That point is well made by councillor Chongwa. But the problem we have here is the way in which council is going about this arrangement at Chermside, there are maybe one or two people in the market that could possibly even do this. Our current pool providers, there are a couple of really big ones, all of the local pool operators are pretty much long gone from Brisbane, they've been priced out of delivering community pool services by bigger players in the industry. But even this has become, this is going to change the landscape dramatically. Now, what this does not say is how much money is allocated in council's budget, and the council paper should say that, and I note that no one has answered my question, this information was not publicly available in the budget, and it should be publicly available, it is a public figure, how much money council has budgeted for the pool upgrade process this year and over the forwards if that funding is continuing. What we know is the amount that council and the private sector estimate, and these aren't even real estimates, right, because no one has given us any tenders, there's no scope, there's no nothing, but the amount in here is a robbery amount, and it's an eye-watering amount of money. And even the procurement process papers that are here before us today point to the high risks of an inability for people to be able to deliver the capital investment in the way that council wants. So here's the question, what behind closed doors discussions has council had with its existing pool operators? And we know there are a couple of really big ones that this council favours, directly favours, and what, if anything, has been discussed with them? I think the Lord Mayor needs to stand up and be very clear about this, because this is an unusual process. Certainly, there are smaller leases that may include an extension for a return on an investment, but nothing like we are seeing here today. There is no detail in here about how long the lease might be, because we don't know. This level of investment may require a 50-year lease, is that what council's going to give the pool operator? Will they be in a position to deliver it? Pool operators have changed dramatically in the 17 years that I've been here. The way in which council is going about this procurement process puts our council at risk, puts undue pressure on pool operators to offer an arrangement that they may not have the capability or financial size to deliver. So council has got this wrong. There are two different things happening here, and the model that council is bringing forward today is not the right model to ensure that the Chermside pool facilities are properly upgraded for the community to benefit from. Now, I don't know whether there'll be other major players that come out of the market to go, well, we'll invest in a pool, you give us 50 years, and who knows, the lend leases of the world might decide that they'll come down and start looking at long-term leases in Brisbane pools, I don't know. But this is an extraordinary and unusual arrangement because of its size and the way in which it is conflating major capital upgrades with very unclear leasing arrangements. So I'll just say, I don't support this. We know this is where the LNP get it wrong every single time, they cannot be trusted on major contracts, doesn't matter what it is, the Metro is a great example. They have wasted millions and millions and millions of dollars on that project. This will not lead to a good outcome, because this council is incapable of running efficient procurement.
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Further speakers, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is an exciting SCP proposal, and it will be an exciting redevelopment of the Chermside Pool, something that we are very much looking forward to seeing happen and something we are committed to, but also something that we will continue to do in partnership with private operators.
That's right.
Now, if you listen to various people that have talked already, you would think that somehow engaging private operators is something that only the LNP administration has done. But in fact, it was actually the Australian Labor Party that first contracted out the operation of public pools. And it was the Australian Labor Party that contracted out the collection of rubbish, and the Australian Labor Party that contracted out grass-cutting and the operation of the City Cat ferries. And so when we hear that somehow this is a recent thing, that is absolute rubbish. The reality is, it was done on both sides of the political fence, because it provides a much more favourable outcome for ratepayers. And so we've seen all kinds of rewriting of history that's happened today. And so the operation of the Chermside Pool has been done privately for many, many years. And in fact, when councillor Cassidy, as a young boy, was at the pool, probably eating Doritos as well, it was a private operator, no doubt, that was operating the pool, I suspect. And so councillor Cassidy also made some comments about the fact that apparently there's been no investment in pools. And so, I think, what, he said there'd been one pool built, did he say that? Well, okay.
I don't think he knew.
So this administration and its predecessors has a proud record of investing in our pools. We, in fact, have more pools in Brisbane City Council by a factor of many than any other council, and even taking into account the relative size of councils. The next, the next largest council that has, that operates swimming pools is the Gold Coast, which is about half the size of Brisbane. But instead of 22 pools like we have, they have eight pools. And every other council has fewer pools than the Gold Coast. And so we have a large number of pools by any measure, and we invest in those pools, and we maximise that investment as well by making sure that we have great operators.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Yep.
Point of order, councillor Adams.
Would the Lord May take a question?
Absolutely.
Lord Mayor, what administration, the Yarra administration, closed pools in Brisbane?
Lord Mayor.
That's actually at the bottom of my notes here. So, thank you councillor, councillor Adams. Instead of investing in pools, the Labor Party has a record on pools, and that involved closing pools and selling off the land, including the Tewong Pool. They saw dollar signs in their eyes, and they closed down the Tewong Pool, and there's now a high-rise building on the site. And so that was Labor's record when it comes to investing in pools. This administration and its predecessors have built the Mount Cravat East Pool, the Parkinson Aquatic Centre, the Emily Seabom Aquatic Centre at Brecon Ridge. We've also upgraded in recent years the Runcorn Pool, the Langlands Pool, the Musgrave Park Pool, the Newmarket Pool, and in fact, the Sandgate Pool in councillor Cassidy's area has been upgraded as well. And so we've certainly invested in pools and will continue to invest in pools, but we make the ratepayer dollar go further by entering into partnerships with high-quality and respected operators who are also prepared to put their investment into the facilities as well. And one of the things I do love about the 22 pools is that there are no two pools in Brisbane that are exactly the same, they all have their unique personality, they have different operators, and those operators get to know the community on a first-name basis in so many cases. They love their local communities, and as councillor Fiona Cunningham has pointed out, Jan down at Langlands knows almost everyone that comes in by name. And that's an example of why working with private operators is a wonderful thing, because they do genuinely care about this, and they're prepared to put their own money and finance into this as well. They are passionate about running an exceptional pool, and the other thing is, there's a level of competition between the different operators, because the leases don't go forever, they do come up for renewal, there is competition in the marketplace. And so the different operators have a level of competition to make sure their pool is better, and that they're attracting customers or not losing customers to other pools. And so I think it's a great system, it is a system that the Labor Party established, and one that we're going to make even better. And so the Chermside Pool is a great example of that, and we certainly look forward to making sure that this is a great destination park, destination facility, sorry. And I want to thank councillor Parry for her support as the local councillor of this upgrade, and we know that there'll be many more generations to come who will benefit from this particular item that we're debating today and the investment that will come from it.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Dixon.
Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for 15 minutes, which commences only when all councils have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Givney that the meeting adjourn for a period of 15 minutes, which commences only when all councils have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. All those in favour say aye, those against no. The ayes have it. The meeting will be adjourned when all councils have left the chamber. Councillors, we'll now continue with item C. Any further speakers? Councillor Strong.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. I rise to speak on item C, the redevelopment of the Chermside Aquatic Centre. When I initially saw that on the agenda, of course, I thought, well, I'm going to have to speak to this, simply because, yes, it's obviously come to an age where it needs to be redeveloped or redone, and it was interesting what the plan going forward. You can tell that, of course, what this city is missing, of course, is 50-metre pools, right? And with the Olympics coming, we're going to need 50-metre pools. I mean, we certainly need 25 metres as well, but 50 metres is the Olympic size. And so I wasn't surprised when I saw that in the plan that there was a 50-metre pool. We should probably have a lot more. Anyways, I wanted to speak about this because also, in my area, of course, I'm one of the few wards that don't have real access to a pool for about 50,000 people. I mean, there is a small Carroll Park Pool, which is part of the Carroll Park State School precinct, and it's a lovely little pool, but I use the word lovely little, because it is that. It's well-kept, well-maintained, and it's, which is a credit to the contractors who have the lease. But if we have a look at the 22 pools that we actually have across the city, guess what? Most of them were built by Labor, not by the LNP. And how many has, how many has the LNP built in the last 10 years or 11 years, whatever? One? One. One. One, Parkinson. Which, by the way, was supposed to have been built, was supposed to have been built in the Parkinson.
Adams. Thank you, councillors.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Which was supposed to have actually been built in my ward, which was actually Parkinson Ward down Waterford Road. But once the redistribution happened, guess what happened? The pool got moved to Parkinson, Parkinson. So anyways, they needed the pool too, of course, so there's nothing wrong with that, right? We'd all like a pool in our wards, and of course, there are some wards, if the council's on the other side of the chamber, there are some wards that don't actually have a pool, and I'm sure they'd love one as well. So it's an extraordinary amount of money that they're reinvesting into the Chermside Aquatic Centre. It's, I mean, the pool already exists, or the precinct already exists, so it's not like a greenfield site that we're going to have to construct. So, and, but it's an extraordinary amount of money for reconstruction, to me, anyways. It certainly would go ways to building a couple of more, or maybe one and a half pools somewhere else that needs it, that needs the pools. But because, I mean, climate change is on, things are getting more extreme, cooler temperatures, hotter temperatures, and these pools are, these pools are an escape place for residents that don't, can't afford to have their own pool in their backyard, but also in a recreational space as well, which is a lot of fun they can take their kids to, and the $2 dips is a way of increasing the numbers through the gates, and there's nothing wrong with that. And I'm sure, I'm sure whichever, whichever company gets settled on the Chermside, I'm sure they'd like to see some of that $2, $2 dips as well, if they're allowed, I suppose. Anyways, so I just wanted to raise the issue in regards to pools in my ward, and I would just like the council to maybe have a think about, maybe building some more, some more, some more pools, somewhere around Brisbane, I don't know, maybe out at the Gap. You know, there's Walter Taylor, I sure would probably like a pool, a pool out at Walter Taylor, I don't know, I'm sure there's, I'm sure there's quite a few over there that don't have pools. Yeah, I'm sure they would love a pool as well. Thank you, Chair.
Further speakers, councillor Howard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to speak on item C, and of course, item C is the significant contracting plan for the Chermside Aquatic Centre redevelopment. Through you, Madam Chair, the answer to councillor Johnston is in the Commercial Incompetence addendum provided in the papers. Councillor Cassidy is trying to say that he hasn't seen any investment in our pools in 10 years. Well, he must have had his eyes shut, because since 2020-21 alone, this Shirena Council has invested more than $70 million into our pool network. I'll just say that again, so everyone doesn't misunderstand, seven zero, $70 million into our pool network. And that's not even counting what we're delivering this financial year. Now, Madam Chair, we are talking about a network of 22 council pools, nearly three times more than the largest comparative council, the City of Gold Coast, which has just eight. This Shirena Council has a proud legacy of investment, and the record speaks for itself, so everyone get your pens ready.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
I hope you've got your pens ready.
One moment, please, councillor Howard. Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Claim to be misrepresented.
I note your claim. Councillor Howard.
2016, Acacia Ridge Water Features and Children's Pool Upgrades. 2016-17, Balbary Children's Zero Depth Playground. 2016, built the new Parkinson Pool. 2017 to '22, we delivered major upgrades at Sandgate Pool. 2017-
2017, we delivered Aqua Parks, the Manly Forshore. 2018 to 19, heating of the 50-metre pool at Hibiscus. 2019, refurbished the café at Newmarket Pool. 2019, delivered an interactive water play area at Runcorn Pool. 2019, upgraded the 50-metre pool at Balbary. 2019-21, delivered the major redevelopment of Langlands Pool. 2019-20, delivered another major redevelopment at Musgrave Pool. 2020, delivered a new programmed pool and swim pool at Dunlop Park Pool. 2020, Runcorn Kids Pool Aqua Park Extension. 2021, Balbary Pool Children's Leisure Pool Replacement. 2021, St Henry Pool Glazing. 2021, Musgrave Park Swim Wall Installation. 2021, Comersley Pool Bathroom Upgrade. 2021, Langlands Pool Swim Wall Installation. I hope I'm going to get through in the five minutes that we have, but I'll keep going. 2021, Yoronga Pool Saltwater Chlorinator and Filtration Upgrade. 2021, upgraded the filtration system at Sandgate Pool. 2021, upgraded the filtration system at Mount Cravat East Pool. 2021, upgraded the female bathrooms at Newmarket Pool. 2022, flood recovery works at Jinder Lee, Newmarket and Balbary. 2022, refurbished the 50-metre Newmarket Pool. 2023, Runcorn Pool Amenities Upgrade. 2024-25, St Henry Pool Revitalisation. 2025, Musgrave Park Pool New Children's Pool and Building Works. And, Madam Chair, this financial year, we're delivering a new swim wall for the Newmarket Pool and upgrading the Valley Pool. Chair, the item before us continues the Shrinna Council's proud legacy of investment in our pools. This is about securing a partner to help us deliver a brand-new, modern aquatic facility for one of Brisbane's busiest and most iconic pools. The Chirmside Aquatic Centre serves a catchment of around 250,000 people, and it's one of Brisbane's most loved and well-used spots. That's why we're investing now to make sure it can meet the needs of our growing community for decades to come. And our vision is for an inclusive, contemporary facility that caters for people of all ages, abilities and interests. Spaces for casual swimmers, competitive training, kids' water play and indoor programmes. And accessibility, inclusion and sustainability will be at the forefront. So as outlined by the deputy mayor, key features will include an indoor 25-metre heated programmed pool with ramp and accessibility equipment, an outdoor 50-metre World Aquatics compliant pool with a swim wall and year-round heating, a new water play area with potential replacement of the existing water slides, modern amenities including changing facilities, a café and kiosk and sustainability measures. So council will contribute towards the project with the delivery partner responsible for designing, building and operating the facility.
Councillor Howard, your time has expired. Councillor Johnston, your point of misrepresentation.
Yes, earlier in my speech today, I raised concerns about council failing to provide the amount in the council budget in this year and in the forwards for the Chirmside Pool upgrade. Councillor Howard has stood up and said that that information is in the confidential, which it is not. She's misrepresented me. The information in the confidential is an expected amount for the project. It does not provide the information I requested, which was the budget amount for this year and four years, which has not been provided.
Further speakers? No further speakers. We'll now put item C to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those against no. The ayes have it.
Division?
Division.
Division called by deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Dixon. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells. Clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it. The voting being 18 in favour, one against and one abstention.
That is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order councillor Johnston.
Just got a procedural inquiry, if that's okay. Just with respect to the councillors participating by teams. If they are not present on screen for the division, are they counted as being present for the purposes of the division?
No, if their screen's off, they're not counted. But I could see councillor Colly, I have counted her. We'll now move to item D. Deputy mayor.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Item D is the significant contracting plan for the provision of services for the Brisbane Enterprise Resource Planning Programme. The proposal at hand has two main objectives. Firstly, it seeks approval to amend and expand the existing SAP ERP programme contract to accommodate the evolving needs of the organisation. Secondly, it seeks to establish a separate new contract for SAP S4HANA, Application Managed Services, or AMS as officers refer to it. The new agreement is essential to provide the necessary support and enhancement of our ERP, which will be vital to the long-term success and council's overall value for money for ratepayers. A new programme, Modern ERP, is underway to replace the aging system with its new suite of offerings. So council plans to seek a new vendor to maintain and support this system for up to nine years. But, Madam Chair, I know that I for one love technology, but sometimes it can be complex to understand, especially if you're not working in this kind of operating environment on a day-to-day level. So for the benefit of the chamber, I'm going to create an analogy. Essentially, an ERP integrates and manages Brisbane City Council's core business processes, such as finance, asset management, human resources, procurement, supply chains and operations into one single centralised system. Think of an ERP as the central nervous system of our Brisbane City Council. Just as the nervous system coordinates signals between the brain, the heart and the limbs to keep our bodies moving, the ERP connects departments like finance, people and culture and procurement to make sure that they can work together efficiently and effectively as well. Without it, departments might operate isolated, in an isolated way, with manual communication between each department. And this obviously leads to delays, but worse, errors. With an ERP, information flows instantly, like nerve signals enabling faster, smarter decisions, such as allocating resources during a disaster or processing payroll for a large number of employees without any hiccups. An application management service provider is a specialised partner that delivers ongoing support, maintenance and optimisation of an ERP. The AMS provider makes sure that our system remains reliable, secure and up-to-date by addressing issues, applying updates when needed and enhancing functionality to meet our council's evolving needs. Imagine your home has just been upgraded with a high-speed NBN fibre internet connection, replacing the outdated dial-up system. This is exactly the type of analogy that I want councillors to understand today. The new connection will deliver blazing-fast internet, enabling seamless streaming, smart home automation and remote work for your household. However, to keep this connection reliable, secure and performing at its best, you rely on a dedicated support team. And in this case, it's your AMS provider. So with that, Madam Chair, I hope that's been informative for councillors in the chamber, and I commend this item.
Further speakers councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. And that was as clear as mud from the deputy mayor who's in charge of the rollout of these programmes in council. And God help us, if we're entering into a $120 million, the estimated value, IT contract with the LNP in charge, because they have form. We've heard the LNP talk about council administrations from the early 90s today. Well, let's talk about council administrations that still exist and still hold power in this place and their record on IT failures. The SAP, a significant contracting plan for the SAP contract before us today is for five core functions of council. And this will sound familiar for councillors, been around for a while in this chamber and heard a lot of the same sort of things that predate councillor Cunningham's time in here in terms of IT functionality and systems and contracts that the LNP have sought to enter in the past and have been abysmal failures. So five core functions, of course, is assets and works, human capital management, payroll, finance and procurement. We, of course, remember, and if those councillors don't remember, just do a light Google and find out about Tech One. The Tech One disaster.
Councillor Marks, do not call out while another councillor is on their feet. No. Thank you. No councillor. Councillor Cassidy.
A caution or a warning? I'm not sure about that one. So we've got same concerns with this one, Chair, of course, because the LNP have form. And the same people are all sitting here in this chamber, the same people who stuffed it up so badly and cost the ratepayers of Brisbane tens of millions of dollars in legal costs and legal judgements against council. So when the LNP contracted Tech One all those years ago, it turns out, and we found out through all the legal proceedings, that the LNP entered an IT contract without even knowing what they wanted. They entered into, at the time, a $60 million contract, a bit more, 62, I think it was, without even knowing what function they really needed or wanted. They started to sort of figure it out along the way as the system was being designed. And obviously, costs started to escalate. It was pretty incredible stuff when we saw it at the end. So the smoking gun, of course, was the external report into the contract with Tech One. And that, of course, has been locked away under lock and key by this desperate LNP administration, never to see the light of day.
Point of order councillor Adams.
Lovely history, even though it is wrong, but it is not relevant to the item before us today.
Thank you, councillor. Don't uphold that point of order. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. So never saw the light of day, but the report was commissioned back in November 2016 when problems first arose. Fresh, and this is, of course, Chair, importantly, fresh off the back of ratepayers being fleeced $450,000 in invoice fraud from some Nigerian prince due to councillor Adams's incompetence in overseeing that part of council. And in January 2017, we saw the then Lord Mayor Quirk announce what he described as a $60 million blowout and blamed Tech One, the company, for that IT blowout. But Tech One-
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, deputy mayor.
I don't see the words Tech One in the submission. Can the councillor come back to the submission, please?
Have been quite lenient, councillor. Can you come back to item D?
Thanks, Chair. This is actually really important because councillor, the deputy mayor wasn't here. I know councillor Adams was because she was in charge of all this, but the deputy wasn't here. So there's some context around the reason we need this solution and these legacy systems that have been in place for the last 10 years is because the LNP stuffed up the Tech One contract back in 2016. So Tech One wanted that report to be released. They called for council to release that report, which shows the people of Brisbane what went wrong where. And for councillors as well to have full disclosure, because at some point in the future, we'd have to enter into these contracts again, right? That's what we were told nine years ago as the contract was cancelled, that at some point in the future. We thought it would be much sooner than nine years down the track. But at some point in the future, we would need to look at our IT systems again. And this isn't just some small off-the-cuff upgrade, as the deputy mayor's tried to describe. This is for the fundamental function of council in the back end. So a really telling fact about all this, and the rot really set in well before that Tech One debacle, is that all of council's IT capability was outsourced. And that's a very common theme for the LNP. Outsource, try to reduce costs, in fact, increase costs because we lose the capability as an organisation to understand our requirements for certain things. And this was the case when it came to IT contracts. So the only IT staff we now employ as council are the VIP IT staff that we deal with as councillors, who are amazing at their jobs and support us at the drop of a hat. They're always there to support what we need in terms of our IT solutions as councillors to operate our jobs. But that doesn't exist when it comes to council's operations. All of that is contracted out otherwise. So there's all these issues around the hubris of the LNP saying that they support Brisbane's economy. They're doing anything but when we see who and where they contract this work out to, rather than supporting people working locally. But this is a really important upgrade. And we know that those systems 10 years ago were limping along, were in limp-along mode. And it was affecting the work and the productivity of council officers out in the field, doing ordinary work of council in inspecting broken footpaths and trees that need trimming from that level of council right up through to significant procurement and the management of council's complex payroll system. 10 years ago, they were limping through, and we saw a huge cost burden put on the people of Brisbane through legal costs and judgements against council. So we just have very little faith in this LNP regime to be able to carry this work out. So that's the first part of this clause that I've just talked about. The second part of the clause, of course, is launching a new request for proposal for SAP, SAP, Application Managed Services. And so this is a potential spend. The previous one was a potential spend of up to $120 million. We know last time the LNP said they had a potential spend, it turned out to be double that. Bear that in mind. This potential spend for this part of the clause is $220 million for an IT system that uses AI to automate processes and apparently provide insights, according to the papers before us today. Sounds familiar. We just spent 700 grand on that in contracts last week for another external provider. But this part is designed, apparently, to streamline processes, increase automation and provide real-time insights into business operations within council. We'd be interested to see what those real-time insights into business operations actually mean. Unlike fibre connection to a home that councillor Cunningham described as an analogy, some actual detail on a proposal to expend $220 million of ratepayers' money might have actually been helpful from the chair of the committee that is responsible for the rollout of this expenditure. That was really quite incredible. But there's a huge, a huge question that needs to be answered as well in the safeguarding of the kind of work that council does. We've had the debate around privacy policy earlier in the day. We know that there's going to be an increased use of AI in council operations because it's in the papers before us today, council is seeking to spend $220 million to automate council's operations as well. What is the risk to jobs within council? And what is the plan in terms of workforce participation around transitioning and ensuring the jobs of the future are protected as good, decent, full-time, permanent jobs here in council? We know, of course, over the last 18 months or so, 500 positions have exited this council. Except they're not forced redundancies, but there are 500 fewer people now working- except they're not force redundancies, but there are 500 fewer people now working in council than there were 18 months ago, delivering services to the people of Brisbane. So there's something to be said about using AI to ensure that, you know, automating manual tasks and as much as possible, and in terms of reducing the risk of things like invoice fraud that we've seen under the LNP and their watch, things like ensuring that employees are paid correctly with a complex set of allowances and things like that for different, you know, trades and whatnot within council through the EBA. So there's something definitely to be said for that. And they can also, it says here, be used to manage and track company assets. So perhaps the LNP are looking to use AI to find better ways to depreciate assets and claim them as expenses in the budget and write things off like the Storybridge entirely. But we have serious concerns around the LNP's commitment to the detail on this, as we have heard from the deputy mayor and their track record in massive costblows on these projects.
Councillor Cassidy, your time has expired. Are there any further speakers on item D? Councillor Strunk.
Oh, wow. I would have thought one of those LNP councillors on the other side would have got up and waxed lyrical about the, oh, sorry, I've used that term again, haven't I?
Item D, thanks, councillor Strunk.
Sorry?
Item D.
Yep, yeah, I did go to school. A, B, C, D, E.
Let's remember that you have left.
Yes.
Thank you, councillor.
Okay, listen, I wanted to rise and speak on this one. The opposition leader said it out very well, you know, that we've been down this road before, and it wasn't a good ending. It was a shocking ending, costing a lot more money than the $120 million that it was going to cost, or did cost in the end. But I just had a look at those five different areas that this system, Hannah's system, is seeking to control. And obviously, it's a pretty, it's a pretty big area to cover. I mean, we've gone from, we've increased the panel from five to, or sorry, six to 15, which means that either it's got a lot more complicated and it needs a lot more, a lot more panel companies, I should say, I suppose, to submit for this new system, and, you know, the two, the two, the two $20 million, is that going to be the end of it, you know? Who knows? Who knows? I mean, IT is becoming very, very expensive, as we all know, you know? The amount of money you spend on IT, crikey, you know? You could build a lot of things. But it's important that we do obviously protect our data and it is able to communicate in those other areas, right? From a holistic point of view, right? I mean, payroll, payroll and finance and procurement, three big, three big areas, three big areas, and assets and works, and assets are very important, as councillor Kim found out, when her assets were stripped. I wonder if we've been able to, I wonder if you've been able to track it, if we'd actually had a good system.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, councillor Adams.
I'm sure the leader of the opposition asked councillor Strunk to filibuster, but he needs to filibuster at least on item D, please.
Thank you, I don't uphold your point of order, councillor Strunk.
Oh, thank you, thank you, Chair. Thank you for your protection. Now, it's really important that we get this right this time round, right? The old system has been limping along, as the opposition leader said, councillor Cassidy said, it's been limping on for a number of years, and I don't know why it's taken almost 10 years to revisit the issue of that, of the need for this type of software system to actually manage our, manage our everyday business, basically. And it is everyday business. So I just, I'd just like to put it on the record that I don't have a lot of confidence in, not so much in the system, but in our ability to implement the system in a, well, not so much equitable, but in an appropriate way, so that we get, we get good value for money out of our $120 million or $220 million, depending on what it ends up being. Thank you, Chair.
Any further speakers? We'll now put item D to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Chong Wah, and seconded by councillor Strunk. Eyes to my right, nose to my left. Please ring the bells. Clerks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 12 in favour and six abstentions.
That is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. Councillors, we'll now move to item E. Deputy Mayor.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I rise to speak on item E, which is the SCP for Council Security Operations Centre. This item outlines the plan for a new corporate procurement arrangement to secure a preferred supplier to help us improve our cyber security operations centre, or C-SOC, as well as cyber products and services. The submission proposes an initial three-year agreement with the option to extend for up to six additional years, providing council with some flexibility, stability and potentially, in the long run, a nine-year partnership all going well. Madam Chair, our technology landscape has changed and continues to evolve, as we all know, the world around us does. The threats that we're facing today, though, are more sophisticated. The digital landscape is evolving rapidly, and so are our internal environments across both information and operational technology. The item helps ensure that council is resilient, centralised and efficient across our entire organisation. The submission does not propose starting from scratch, we're building on what we have already established. Through this arrangement, council will continue to optimise existing technologies, integrate advanced threat intelligence and proactively enhance our capability. As we mature our processes, we expect to see real value through automation, faster incident response and better support services. As an organisation, we're continually changing and testing our environments because we know that sadly, as a government agency, we can be a target, especially as we lead into the games. So we're planning for today, but we're also preparing for the challenges of tomorrow. This is a strategic investment in our future. It's about having the right people, the right processes and the right technology in place to protect our digital environment, but importantly, keep our community and our residents safe from any cyber threats. And with that, Madam Chair, I commend it to the chamber.
Further speakers, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. Rise and speak on this one, E, I believe, E. This is critical, I agree with the deputy mayor on that, to have the most up-to-date protections for council, because ultimately, that is protecting ratepayers' money. Again, 10 years ago, almost 10 years ago, we saw that terribly embarrassing situation of invoice fraud committed on Brisbane City Council to the tune of $450,000. I'm sure that's not, that was just very publicly aired at the time, I'm sure there was lots of other cyber threats, and it's not really even a cyber threat, that's just really poor management on the LNP's part, wasn't it, to be paying, to be paying $450,000 in fraudulent invoices before they picked up on it? But anyway, at every, every time we've seen the Queensland Audit Office do reports and into council around those issues as far back as then, when we see the audit committee, minutes as light on as they are, come to council, this, since that point, has been a critical issue for council to grapple with. And to sort of, to find out, I guess, now when we see this item coming through, again, it's one spitting twice shy with the LNP in taking them at their word, but we understood we had robust systems in place post all those issues almost 10 years ago. So we certainly hope what this is, is actually building on systems that are in place, despite the fact that each and every audit committee in Queensland Audit Office report that comes back, and what we get as councillors, we were not allowed to interrogate that any further than what we're given, is that they continue to raise the issue of cyber security with Brisbane City Council. Now, protecting council and council's assets and therefore the people of Brisbane's assets against cyber security threats is going to become much more critical over the next less than seven years now, because Brisbane is now an Olympic city. And as we get towards, closer and closer towards the games, that's going to be a critical thing that needs to be addressed, not just for the games themselves, but Brisbane is going to be up in shining lights around the world and will be seen as a potential target, not just as council, but given the context of having the world's largest event here in Brisbane, not just the world's largest sporting event, the world's largest event here in Brisbane. So getting this right is really critical. And what we see as well, I don't know that deputy mayor mentioned, I think in terms of, I guess which was alluding to, in terms of building on work that has already happened, council, in doing the evaluation of the market itself, council's engaged in discussions with Gold Coast City Council, Air Services Australia and DTMR to explore the feasibility of a partnership model for 24/7 monitoring services in council, which is a good idea. In not going it alone on this issue, I think it is a good idea, and particularly given the size and importance of protection against cyber security threats for those other councils, Air Services Australia, as a critical piece of national infrastructure, I guess, in making sure our airways are open, also in the context of being an Olympic city and also DTMR with their reach across Queensland and national arrangements as well, is a good thing. So I, we support this item today, it is of critical importance. But I am bemused and a little shocked that we aren't further down this road, given the history of this LNP administration, when it comes to, when it comes to detecting cyber crimes and fraud and things like that. And here, it is a little bit shocking. So we certainly hope we see this reported back when these arrangements are in place and as councillors and as the people who are responsible for entering into these arrangements and supposedly keeping, holding them to account, the administration to account over it, all as individual councillors, not just this side of the chamber. Very shocked that, you know, that last debate, we were talking about expending, what was that, $340 million on IT contracts and not one LNP councillor apart from the deputy mayor spoke there. So maybe, maybe they'll get up today after having read through the papers that are before us today and contribute to this debate and ensure that they, in their party, are ensuring that councillors hold to account on this, on behalf of ratepayers, but we don't really hold our breath for that much, Chair.
Further speakers? No further speakers. We'll now put item E to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. We'll now move to item F. Deputy Mayor.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Item F is the adoption of a minor and administrative amendment package to the city plan, it's known as Package U. It's important that our planning scheme remains effective, relevant and up-to-date, reflecting current circumstances and the latest standards. To this end, minor and administrative package, amendment Package U, proposed to update zoning and overlays in the city plan to reflect current development approvals, donated council assets, updates to state planning policy mapping and two properties purchased under the voluntary home buyback programme. As this side of the chamber has made clear before, we are ardent supporters of the voluntary home buyback programme, and we remain supportive of expanding it with state and federal funding support, in line with the recommendations from the Honourable De Jersey in his review. In addition to making small changes to planning scheme policies, this item will also update the zone purpose statement of the community facility zone. This will reflect the fact that affordable housing can now be facilitated in this zone under certain circumstances, as per changes to state legislation, helping to alleviate the housing challenge that our city faces. By ensuring our planning scheme remains current and reflects changes over time, we can provide certainty and confidence in its administration. Once adopted, Madam Chair, minor U will take effect from the 19th of September, and I commend it to the chamber.
Further speakers, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. Rapid fire, backwards and forwards debate, this is great. Clause F U, clause of Package U, updating zoning and overlay maps to reflect the current development approvals, as we've heard, properties acquired, well, two properties acquired through the Queensland Reconstruction Authority's voluntary home buyback programme and newly donated council assets such as parks. So incorporating updates to, as well as those zoning changes. This also incorporates updates to state planning policy mapping, specifically the overlays for biodiversity areas, heritage and regional infrastructure corridors and substations as well. This is also including, this package as well, revising references to Australian standards in planning scheme policies, so bits and pieces from every level here, basically as well, ensuring alignment with industry best practice and external guidance. This includes updates to the park management plan and storage and dispensing of petroleum products policies. Making changes to city plans required by the Planning Amendment Regulation Number Two, 2024, particularly to the zone purpose statement for community facility zone, I'll come back to that. No, I won't, I'll deal with that right now, actually. So the changes, as the deputy mayor touched on there, will include residential uses in the community facility zone for residential use, so long as they are affordable housing and associated with a community activity such as community care centre, place of worship or residential care facility. So these are some of the changes that have been advocated for some time, particularly for housing and not just sort of an open policy on housing, but particular types of housing, as we see reflected here, on land owned by religious organisations, church land essentially, so for churches who have very deferential rates in land that they occupy, have for a while in response to the housing crisis, sought to partner with particularly community housing providers, some of which operate like, you know, through Anglicare and uniting church and Anglican church and Catholic church, through St Vincent's Housing, things like that as well. So it makes sense to align that, and particularly where it does align with their existing community uses and get better, better yield out of those sites, particularly delivering affordable housing. So certainly something we support there. And I know in my ward, there's, there are churches who have engaged at a council and state level over the last few years in advocating for changes like this, to be able to provide housing. Yeah, yeah, that's right, seniors living is really critical. And, you know, this conversation's different context because it's state-owned land, but has happened over the last 10 years around surplus land at places like the Brighton Health Campus, to be able to provide a certain type of housing outcome for people there that isn't specifically related to aged care and nursing home, high-level, high-level care as well. So and specifically on that as well, that land obviously has to be owned, controlled or managed by an entity that carries out community activity comprised, again, of a care centre, place of worship or residential care facility as well. So co-locating, co-locating that living, and we see that in sort of some parcels of land that have people who might And we see that in sort of some parcels of land that have people who might enter in an over 50s currently, sort of resort-style living, village-style living, that then can transition to separate places that are owned and operated by that organisation for medium care and then some operate high care as well. But the, the change that we see in the state planning policy, which is now reflected or will be reflected in city plan, includes supported housing models in the community facility zone as well. And so this is slightly different. We went over to Common Ground over in South Brisbane recently and saw the amazing work there and spoke to people who live there about how that's, that's supportive housing model works in, and essentially for, for a lot of people who find themselves homeless, sleeping rough, and, and in a long-term sense, it's the only way of which we break the cycle of homelessness for some people. And we met some people and, and heard of some people, two others that have been there since opening day, I think back in 2011, 12, something like that, and others that have come more recently there as well. And to know, in terms of that model of housing which is supported in the community facility zone now through these changes, that there's a, there's a development happening on the Gold Coast at the moment that was approved and, and funded by the previous state government for the same model of, that is Common Ground, of supportive housing, that'll provide a couple of hundred units to people sleeping rough. To know that if we had something like four or 500 units built Queensland-wide, we could through that model, and it takes a serious commitment, end homelessness here in Brisbane. Not overnight, obviously, because it takes some time to find funding partners and a council willing to partner with them to do that work. But to know that of the couple of hundred people that call Common Ground Home over there, without that, they would be sleeping rough in Brisbane. They wouldn't find a home in a hotel or a motel for one or two nights a week, as the Lord Mayor seems to think they can. The only way to break that cycle of homelessness for people who have serious health and mental health complex needs is, is through models like that. So this is a, a really great inclusion. And if we have the community housing sector, working with community organisations funded by the state and federal government and supported by council to see more developments like this, we will actually move the dial on homelessness here in Brisbane. Now, that, that would be a great news story if we had the Lord Mayor standing up and singing that from the rooftops. In the context of all of the, the, the negative and nasty things that he's been doing in this space over the last few months, wouldn't you think he would stand up today and say this is the thing that he's bringing? Well, he's not, he, he didn't bring it. The Deputy Mayor has because he's a part-time mayor. We sometimes forget that, but, you know, his behaviour demonstrates that when we come back here into, into council when we're in session. I don't know where he is. Maybe he'll come back and do another fake report on some of the fake things he's been doing while he's not been in the chamber. But you would think, you would think he would be singing from the rooftops about this and going and bashing the door down at the state government level and talking to the federal government about accessing the $10 billion on offer through, for social and affordable housing at the moment and saying, we've got a serious problem here in Brisbane and there is a solution to it. Instead of just a tick and flick exercise, as we have today, that the Lord Mayor has to make a change in this Package U to reflect state planning policy that's been put in place. And that's the end of the road for him. That's enough for him. He doesn't have any interest in doing anything more than that. And it wouldn't cost council one single cent, other than the Lord Mayor's wages, which he's already being paid, to be an advocate and a massive cheerleader for Brisbane out of the levels of government. But unfortunately, we don't see that today. So we think this, this is the potential to be a really great thing for Brisbane, but maybe the Lord Mayor didn't even know it was in there, perhaps, I don't know. Maybe he will now, maybe we'll see a slick video of him out there, standing alone on footpath, talking about it, or something like that. But supporting vulnerable people into, into housing should be, through models like this, should be at the core of what council does in, in ensuring their wraparound support services, something that's very overdue, but something, again, we support and will be supporting this item today.
Further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Sorry. Yes, thank you. I rise to speak on item F, the minor amendments to city plan Package U. And I just would like to start by finding the right bit of paper, which, sorry, they're here. Right, yes. Just by discussing some of the changes that are happening in here, I note the Leader of the Opposition's commentary on, on the lack of, what should I call it, energy, enthusiasm, strategic development, commitment, you name it. The absent, the absent Lord Mayor, he's not here when we're not sitting and he's not here when we are sitting, so I don't know why he's bothering at all, because there really doesn't seem to be any enthusiasm for, you know, planning for the future for this council in Brisbane. And the backbench councillors, they're very good at reading things out when it's provided to them, but most of them just having a bit of a snooze over there to make up the numbers. What I did note is there's really not, despite, despite the, despite the commentary in the papers itself, there's barely any voluntary buyback conversion to parkland, right? Like two? Two? Two. But that's listed as one of the key objectives in the council papers. So, you know, they're just, it, it, these council papers are becoming more and more deceptive about what this is actually about. In my reading of the changes, particularly those in my area, this is catching up by allowing council to convert development applications that have previously been undertaken and now rezoning them to catch up with what council's allowed to happen in that area. Now, that seems to be the major changes. Now, they're doing this very quickly, mind you, and I note with interest that councils, you know, within less than a year, they've got rid of the character residential zoning on the block of land at 21 Bell Terrace that adjoins the six-storey nursing home, I'm sorry, five stories plus an undercroft, that now there's a minor change application coming to convert the undercroft to an actual store. So it will be a six-story building plus a rooftop terrace. So that's the kind of quality development we get here at Brisbane City Council from developers. But this block at 21 Bell Terrace is a small block of land that fronts onto a character street and it is the gateway to the very historic block of land that houses Burnie House, which was the first home of the Courier's editor Buzzcock, I think his name was, back in the day, and lots of other famous people. It's a very, very significant building that is heritage protected in our area. Now, this block at the front is zone character residential because it forms part of the streetscape. But council's proactively getting rid of the zoning, even though the development application says this section at the front is going to be kept as a small parcel of parkland, council's very helpfully rezoning it for the developer to turn it into community facilities, healthcare purposes. So of course, they will then have a code assessable development application to build on this, whatever giant monstrosity they want down the track. So number one, this is not a good idea. This is just council pandering to developers and just making it easier for them to get around council's planning scheme. I note there are a couple of other interesting ones in here as well in my ward. Over at the delightful Yorongpili Todd Precinct, known as Yorongpili Green, where we have a 96 store, a 96 metre high plus all the rooftop services, elevator shafts and everything above that, 26-story building being proposed on a nine-story lot, a nine-story zoned lot. Now, council is now seeking to, again, convert the surrounding blocks to that block, one to low to medium density residential use up to three stories, even though there's only two stories on the lot and the master plan says two stories. Council's going to allow three stories, but that's fine.
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Are there any further speakers on item F? Councillor Davis.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and I rise to speak on the proposed Minor U amendment package as it relates to Programme Three. This amendment package responds to our ongoing commitment to keep city plan up to date with the latest planning information. Whilst these are minor changes, they are nevertheless essential for aligning our planning framework. The key elements of the Minor U amendment that fall under Programme Three include the last remaining properties to be rezoned as open space under the voluntary home buyback program, the updating of existing public land records to reflect newly acquired or donated council assets, and fixes to the state planning policy mapping to improve our biodiversity areas overlay. As you are aware, Madam Chair, we have delivered the voluntary home buyback scheme in partnership with the state and federal governments and have advocated to both of those levels of government to continue with that program. From a total of 354 valuations and offers, 293 were officially accepted. Minor U rezones and removes the residential overlays for the final two VHBB properties. This will ensure both parcels are brought into alignment with our open space zoning, finalising the rezoning of all 293 acquired properties. Madam Chair, there are eight VHBB properties that are still subject to rehabilitation and those rehabilitation works are scheduled for completion by the end of December this year. Minor U also focuses on incorporating newly acquired or donated council assets into city plan and this includes 15 parks. Finally, Madam Chair, today's amendment offers refinements to improve the accuracy of our biodiversity overlays map. We're updating the state planning policy mapping to ensure that it accurately shows current areas of environmental significance and this will ensure the correct land is covered by council's biodiversity areas overlay map. Madam Chair, the Minor U amendment contains sensible and well-considered changes to improve the accuracy of our biodiversity overlays and residential zoning, ensuring Brisbane's open space and ecological values are recognised and protected for future generations and I commend this item to the chamber.
Further speakers? Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to speak on item F, the minor and administrative amendment Package U. This is obviously just part of our rolling program of regular amendments to city plan and ensures that the scheme remains relevant and fit for purpose. In particular, in this case, minor text changes are proposed, including updates to outdated and redundant terms in the planning scheme policies. Updates are also proposed to zoning and overlays to reflect firstly, development approvals for around 80 sites relating to centre, residential and other development, around 15 donated council assets, including parks. As has been previously referenced, there are properties under the voluntary home buyback program, which is zoning from character residential and low-density residential to open space. I believe it was asked in the chamber earlier where those properties are. So it's 71 Rockleigh Street at Archerfield, 32 Nicola Street at Windsor, and both of those properties were reflected in the, the package and therefore all to see, just to provide better guidance as to where they sit. They're in Attachment B, under the Schedule of Amendments, Table One, Items One and Ninety Five. So that information is in the pack. Additionally, as Councillor Davis indicated, there's updates to the state planning policy mapping, for some of which occurred last year and earlier this year. So there's that piece as well. Now, as the Deputy Mayor alluded to earlier, the state government now enables housing on land zones as community facilities to provide affordable housing and also to have uses such as residential care facilities or community care facilities. So, you know, it's a good amendment in the context of some of the challenges that we're facing in the city in terms of providing additional housing. Minor U also has a range of changes that seek to bring city plan into alignment with some of the state legislation, so once again, somewhat administrative in nature, but nonetheless necessary. The amendment in particular, there is no requirement for public consultation or for a state interest review. The point that I would like to make is that Councillor Cassidy referenced the engagement that we may have with the providers of affordable housing. I would like to reinforce the fact that we meet regularly with community housing providers. Some of the more recent meetings were with Jacaranda and Brick. So it is an ongoing point of connection with the community housing providers. Obviously, there will be opportunities as a result of this amendment to, for them to look at sites that they may previously have thought were off limits. That's a positive outcome and rest assured, we will continue to engage with that sector to ensure that where there's opportunities to provide additional affordable and/or social housing, that Brisbane City Council does what we can to support them and I commend the amendment to the change.
Further speakers? No further speakers. We'll now put item F to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division. Division called by Councillor Chongwa, seconded by the Deputy Mayor. Eyes to my right, nose to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells. Clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 18 in favour and two abstentions.
That is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. Councillors, we'll now move to item G. Deputy Mayor.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Item G is another amendment to city plan, minor amendment V. We recognise that Brisbane is built on a floodplain and regularly take steps to maximise our city's flood resilience. Unlike those opposite who'd rather ban all development on flood-prone land, which happens to be most of the inner city, we work to make sure that our planning scheme provides for development to be resilient to flood events. As part of these steps, we've been undertaking our rolling program of creek flood studies since 2011 to inform both the flood overlay in city plan and provide the best and latest flood risk information to help residents in our city be prepared. To that end, minor amendment V proposes to update the flood overlay map, flood planning areas, to reflect the latest flood studies for Breakfast Creek, Jinder Lee Creek and Lotter Creek. As a result of the studies in this case, more than 16,000 properties will have their flood planning area mapping updated. The vast majority of these are in the low and medium risk categories and more than 1,000 have had their risk, their risk decrease. That's more than 1,000 have had their risk decrease. This is not news to residents, Madam Chair. These flood studies have already been uploaded to Flood Information Online to help residents get prepared ahead of the last summer. What has changed is development controls on these properties, which means that future development will be appropriate for the level of flood risk at development will be appropriate for the level of flood risk at each of the properties. This means that in time, the need for measures of last resort, like voluntary buyback, becomes scarcer as home resilience is improved. And although it's something outside of our control, we also know that this will help to put downward pressure on insurance premiums as flood damage is ultimately reduced, and I commend this item to the chamber.
Further speakers. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I rise to speak on clause G, this minor amendment. And when it rains, it floods in Brisbane. That has been the experience for more and more and more people over the last few years. We're not talking just about major rain events that cause flooding, like in 2011 or in 2015, or in my area, 2017 and 2019 and 2022 and through 2024 as well. What this, before us today, does is formalise updates to creek flood studies. And the goal, we're told in all of this, is to enhance Brisbane's resilience to flooding by ensuring that planning decisions are based on the most current technical data. That's the goal of it. So what we're seeing is the updating of flood overlay maps to incorporate the latest flood studies from last year for Breakfast Creek, Ginderley Creek and Lotter Creek catchments, some 10,000 properties affected. And ensuring that through these changes, new developments are designed and constructed in accordance with the latest flood risk information, thereby, as we've heard, reducing the risk of harm to people and their property. And I accept that is a fair point, that when you put development controls on a property that is mapped as having a higher risk of flood, and you allow an enormous amount of fill to be brought into that property, that property, it becomes flood immune. I accept that that is a true fact, what is included in the report for us today, but it can have devastating impacts on neighbouring properties. And following the February 2022 flood disaster, councillor Allen took a series of questions from us in the budget information sessions that followed, and this will just prove how useless they are. Councillor Allen undertook to have a look at the issues around using fill as opposed to other sorts of building methods, such as houses on stumps essentially, and not affecting overland flow, despite the fact that we're told those developments don't. And then a year later, when he was pressed about what work had been done on that, he said, well, none, of course. Of course, they weren't interested in that, the LNP. The 2022 floods, they came and went, and they didn't worry about building practices. They didn't worry about development controls, other than, other than saying individual properties in isolation alone should become flood immune. And that's the situation we have. I've seen that time and time again. I'm sure we all have, all councillors have. This isn't just happening in, in Labor and Green and Independent wards, it's happening in LNP wards as well. You see those blocks being split or old houses being knocked down and new builds coming, and the level of the ground being raised to make sure that that first habitable level is flood immune. What about the neighbours? That's the question we always continue to get as councillors, and LNP councillors get them, but I understand LNP councillors just ignore it. They just ignore the concerns of those residents. I even had this incredible situation, actually, down in Sandgate, where an LNP branch member actually went to councillor Landis, thinking that they'd get an outcome because an LNP councillor would surely have more sway in these development decisions than I would as a Labor councillor. Papa! No good there. And that development, with an enormous amount of fill, is affecting not just that LNP branch member and causing flooding in their place, but also several houses all around there as well. And, and I told him what our position is on this side of the chamber anyway, about looking into those building practices and what the LNP's response has been to them. So I get, I get the argument that we have here today before us, that publishing the updated flood levels on council's open data portal and using that information to update those maps is important, and notifying residents about those changes is critical. And we will see changes to insurance premiums in a slightly different direction to the deputy mayor thinks, for those, the, the 10,000 properties that are affected, not the ones that have come off, obviously, being flood affected, the ones that are going on, of course, of course, they are going to see their premiums increase because their risk profile has now increased. I went and toured the Suncorp Insurance Disaster Centre across the street and looked at, they're very impressive systems about that, and asked these sort of questions. And of course, they said, of course, these things impact on people's insurance premiums as well. So I, I don't accept the deputy mayor's argument that seeing increased risk to more people in Brisbane is going to see a decreased insurance premiums overall. So, so what we've seen here, and, and recently over the last year with these changes to flood maps, is the LNP are noticing that there's more flooding, of course, but where are the drainage projects that go alongside this? Where is the dot point in the report that says council will seek to mitigate what they have found is now a more serious problem for thousands and thousands of people? We know climate change is here and is affecting weather patterns. We have seen international work look at recent floods in South East Queensland and Northern New South Wales, and show a direct correlation between the amount of rain that is falling and the duration of that rain is causing increased flooding. We, we know that is a reality, that is a, a, that is a fact, not just conjecture. But where is, where is the resilience plan to sit alongside these changes to flood studies? Why is this LNP administration walking away from, for instance, being a carbon-neutral council? Where is the climate resilience plan, not just in these areas, but across Brisbane, rather than just saying it's an individual's responsibility to make sure that they are flood immune? That's what the LNP are saying. It's an individual's responsibility, not a community responsibility on behalf of the community, us, as a level of government taking, taking action. Maybe the Lord Mayor learnt some of these things when he jetted off to Harvard recently. I don't know, he didn't mention that in his, in his report. But it would be really foolish, Chair, to think that insurance companies don't look closely, not just at flood mapping, but what councils are doing to mitigate against this. They are, they're looking at, they're looking at all those sort of changes, they're looking at the types of development that are being approved, the experiences that their customers are having, and also what governments are doing, not just state and federal governments, but councils as well, to mitigate against this. And what will they see? What will they see when they look at council's budget, all seven pages of it anyway, but what's publicly reported, I guess? Overseas international travel, of course, big tick there, multi-million dollar online and junk mail advertising, tick there, $500 million write-off of, of metro assets, tick there, but, and, and what they'll see is millions of dollars in cuts to drainage projects that would mitigate against flooding in the suburbs of Brisbane. So again, again, we question, where is the leadership on this? It is completely missing here today. We didn't even, we don't even have a Lord Mayor that could be bothered turning up to introduce this item. That, that is his job today. That is literally his job today, is to introduce these items in the ENC report, and he couldn't even be bothered showing up to work to introduce the item, let alone outline, in his own words, as this city's leader, let alone outline what he is doing to mitigate against these increased flood risks. It's really quite incredible. We don't know what his plan is to mitigate against the climate impacts we're seeing when it comes to flooding here in Brisbane. I don't think you can learn that at the Harvard Business School doing a leadership junket paid for by Michael Bloomberg. I don't think that's what the people of Brisbane expect from their Lord Mayor. We've seen the cancellation of the Victoria Park Master Plan, freeing up what we think is, could be $100 million on that. We see the, the need for more investment in, in flood buybacks, and the need for major changes to building practices and flood mitigation through development controls. We see the need for all those things, but we don't see the leadership in being able to deliver them from this, this part-time, go-slow approach we get from the LNP. And, you know, you think about, we're going to be up to a quarter of a century of LNP rule in Brisbane by the time the next election rolls around, quarter of a century. And you can tell, I'll take that interjection, you can tell. Despite what the Lord Mayor said, it was a few weeks ago, I think, it might have been during budget debate, where he claimed that everybody in Brisbane thinks everything's getting better. He doesn't think there's a congestion crisis, he doesn't think there's a housing crisis, he doesn't think there's a, a, a climate crisis that we're facing here in Brisbane. He thinks everything's all peachy and rosy, but after 24 years, it's really showing. They go through the motions, well, he doesn't, he gets somebody to go through the motions for him here in the council chamber and introduce items on his behalf while he's off somewhere doing god knows what, completely and utterly unaccountable to the people who pay his wages and who vote, to put him in this place to do a job and deliver on behalf of the people of Brisbane, so deeply disappointing.
Further speakers. councillor Chongwa.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak on the minor amendment to Brisbane City Plan 2014, package G, which involves flood studies for Lotter Creek, Ginderley Creek and the Breakfast Creek catchment. This Breakfast Creek catchment flood study, completed in September 2024, has resulted in the largest number of properties ever added to the flood overlay maps from one catchment study. Over 10,000 new properties along Ithaca, Inogra and Breakfast Creek will now be added to the flood overlay maps. 10,000 new properties in flood planning area one, two, three, four and five. Another 2,746 properties will have their flood risk category increased. Following the study, it released in September last year, the first stage was added properties to the flood awareness maps, before the council voted today, which adds the properties more formally to the City Plan's flood overlay maps. I proactively requested a briefing on flood issues in my ward in February this year, but somehow, no mention was made of the 10,000 properties being added to the flood awareness map along my ward boundary. It is unreasonable to believe that residents will proactively check the flood awareness maps for properties they have owned for many years. A briefing on this was provided to me this morning at my request, 11 months after the release of the study. Council staff claimed a media release was sent out in September last year. Surprisingly, we found no mention in the media of this unprecedented Breakfast Creek study. Adding properties to flood maps will cause massive increases in insurance premiums, some will be refused flood insurance completely, and many others will not be able to afford it. House values may also decline. Residents deserve the chance to discuss these studies before it is voted on by council, not after. More than 12,700 property owners around Ithaca, Inogra and Breakfast Creek will be surprised, and many will be shocked. Why would this LNP administration not want to be transparent and notify residents in October last year? That's right! It was a state election! Perhaps this LNP administration wouldn't want over 12,000 property owners knowing that they were suddenly in high-risk flood zones, especially when climate change is a key factor. Not a good look for a party of climate change deniers. If this LNP administration had pressured senior staff to keep this hidden, then they have compromised professional council staff for political gain. These 12,000 property owners affect multiple wards, including the Gap, Inogra and Central. Through the chair, I wonder if councillor Toomey, councillor Wines and councillor Howard have notified their residents about being added to the flood awareness maps back in October last year? I suspect not. Many property owners are affected in Barden, Red Hill, Calvin Grove, Hurston, Albion, Windsor, Wilston, Ashgrove, Newmarket, The Gap, Newstead, Bowen Hills, Fortitude Valley. Yes, even large chunks of Fortitude Valley are now expected to experience a major flooding. This is a wake-up call for an LNP council who continues to devote their whole housing development strategy to flood-prone inner-city suburbs. One of the major reasons so many properties are being added to the flood maps to climate change models is climate change modelling, with the IPCC RCP 4.5 climate change scenario forecasting a two-to-three degrees global average temperature increase by the year 2100. What we are seeing here in Nogga Creek and Ithaca Creek will expand throughout Brisbane City in future studies. Climate change is real and devastating. This LNP administration, in power for 20 years, and their colleagues in the state and federal government, have been blocking action on climate change that is now impacting the people of Brisbane. The LNP has had 20 years to make this city more resilient and less flood-prone. Instead, they're driving Brisbane backwards, cutting stormwater budgets, cutting new parks budgets, reducing green space, massive destruction of our tree canopy, and paving over the lungs of our city, Victoria Park Borough, with mega Olympic stadiums. Their short-sighted urban development strategy has coerced even more people into higher-risk flood zones, sorry, flood zone areas. The Australian Insurance Councils say we shouldn't be building on. This is an administration lacking any vision or integrity to cope with the new dangerous climate change era we are now in.
Councillor, your time has expired. Are there any further speakers on item G? councillor Davis.
Well, thank you very much, Madam Chair, and that was an interesting contribution from councillor Chongwa. I'm not quite sure how we get the figure 10,000 for, for the Paddington Ward. Just to clarify, for the benefit of the chamber, a total of 1,347 properties in the Paddington Ward would be subject to the proposed amendment. 649, 649 of those properties.
Point of order, councillor.
Claim to me misrepresented.
I note your claim. councillor Davis.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I don't know how you can be misrepresented when I've got the figures, figures here, but 649 have had no change to their flood overlay mapping. 13 sites have been removed from the flood overlay mapping. 221 sites have had a decrease in their flood planning area and are now mapped at a lower risk, and 373 sites have had an increase in their flood planning. Most of those changes across all of the three flood study areas that we did were increased primarily to low and some medium, Madam Chair. But there were 91 new sites that have been included in the flood overlay, overlay mapping. And it is interesting that last year, this information was available, as it is, the same process every time we undertake a flood study, the flood study is undertaken, we get some high-level results, we put that up on the flood awareness maps for people to, to be able to see what the, the catchment risk is, the general risk is for their property, and then we go through a peer-reviewed process, where a more granular look is, is given to the flood studies, and then we have our individual bespoke floodwise property reports for each individual property across Brisbane, and that is uploaded with the City Plan. And as was mentioned earlier, that is likely to be the 19th of September, I understand, through your chair, councillor Allen. Doing flood studies is not a new thing. We have a rolling programme of doing this since 2019. We've done, we've done 10 flood step, flood studies, and it's an important thing that we do that, not only for the purposes of planning, but to provide local residents with the tools and information that they need to prepare for severe weather events, particularly flooding in this regard, so that they have all the information at hand to make the decisions to make their properties more flood resilience, resilient. And it's important that we provide that information. It's important that we arm our residents with the best information that we can provide for them to make the decisions that they need to do to keep their properties safe, and also themselves safe during severe weather events. So, Madam Chair, we build on a floodplain. That's the reality of Brisbane, and some of the commentary that councillor Chongwa made, made it very clear that she doesn't seem to accept that that happens to be the case. We all acknowledge that weather patterns are changing. That's why it's important that we undertake these flood studies. The more information we get over the series of flood studies, the more accurate the details become, and so better information for our local residents. So the minor V amendment does focus on three catchments. That's the Breakfast Creek, the Ginderley Creek and the Lotter Creek catchments, and the changes, as Sidwell, will be uploaded from the 19th of September. So the residents of those areas will have more accurate information about the flood risk on their risk on their property based on newly updated rainfall data. So Australian rainfall has recently done some new assessments and so we've been able to use that data when calculating the flood risks. And they'll also have information on the latest standards for building and renovating in those areas. As always, our call centre information would be available to take calls from residents. They will be receiving a letter just in advance of it being uploaded onto city plan. We do that with every flood study before it gets uploaded so that residents can understand their flood risk and can ring the contact centre and arrange to speak to our very, very helpful flood officers in the news team.
Councillor Davis, your time has expired. Councillor Chong Wah, your point of misrepresentation.
Yes, just to clarify that I was saying that the Breakfast Creek catchment, which includes Ithaca, Inogra and Breakfast Creek. Thank you.
Are there any further speakers on item G? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you. I rise to speak on item G, the city plan amendments minor package, minor amendment package V. Look, I represent one of the most flood-prone wards in the city and I've been through two major and several minor floods in the time that I've been here. And the only thing that I can see that's happening in Brisbane is we are going backwards in terms of our approach to managing and mitigating floods in the city of Brisbane. I want to start with a few basic facts. When I first started in council, we did not build on flood-prone land. Council is now allowing the development of highly flood-prone land on parts of this city that in the 200 years that we've been here, we've never built on. Now, yes, there are pressures to put people, but council has a plan. They're not putting the people where they say they'll put them in the plan, but they are jamming them into areas where the land values are lower and they're lower for a reason because there are capacity constraints, including flooding. Now, council's approach to this and the state government is just as bad and I don't, I'm not, whatever your flavour, they're as bad as each other, as far as I'm concerned. And Yorong Pili-Green is a great example of that. The outcome is getting more information to people about their risk of flooding is always a good thing. I think the flood maps that were developed after 2011 have been enormously useful for people. They should be mandatory within contracts of sale. And this is something that I have pushed through both the jersey reviews and the state government reviews post the floods. There is no point in having them sitting there so I can tell somebody who comes to me afterwards and says, "Oh, Nicole, I didn't know it was going to flood." Well, you know, there's flood maps. It's so critical that we continue to give people good information. However, Brisbane City Council's neglect and foreseeable creation of adverse outcomes for residents because of its planning and development assessment scheme is horrific. It is contributing to adverse outcomes in communities across Brisbane. And I want to just take issue with the four things council says it's doing in this report, which are just catastrophically, just characteristically untrue. Firstly, flood mitigation infrastructure. So council says it installs backflow prevention devices. Well, yeah, not for a long time. It says 13 and 8 were constructed in Breakfast Creek and Loda Creek. There's still 31 of the original 51, I think, or 36 of the original 51 waiting to be built that were recommended after 11, many of those in my area. So it's nice that these areas have been prioritised, but we're not building them anywhere. So this statement is out of date and untrue. Council maintains sections of creek. Apparently we dredge in creeks. Apparently we're dredging in Breakfast Creek. Meanwhile, council won't dredge in any other creek in Brisbane because we don't dredge in creeks. And if councillor Griffiths was here, I'm sure he'd stand up and he'd say this too. But this is really fascinating because I've got it in writing here, council's dredging in Brisbane's creeks. In creeks in my area, the response is, "Oh no, that's not our responsibility councillor, that's a state responsibility. You've got to go to the state government." But here we are, Kedron Brook, Breakfast Creek, doing all the work inside the creeks because they're in LMP areas. Buyback. The section on buyback in here talks about a scheme that the LMP stopped and has refused every year since to reinstate. It's almost a decade since they stopped this scheme. And even the flood buyback properties that were bought with state and federal government money, they cannot acknowledge in their own report, is state and federal government money. It's made to look like it's council that has bought back these houses when it's not. There is no buyback scheme. There is no universal flood resilience scheme in Brisbane despite two jersey recommendations. And it gets worse. Fill is the devil and it is the worst thing that you can possibly do when you approve a development in a flood-prone area. And in Price Street in Oxley, council has allowed up to 1.7 metres of fill, no retaining wall on a flood-prone area. It slopes straight down to the best...
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to join the debate on item G, the adoption of minor amendment package V. As previous speakers have indicated, while we can't stop floods, the Shirena Council takes regular steps to ensure that the city is well-prepared for the next one and this item is one of those steps. Just like we have previously done for a range of creeks, minor V will update the flood overlay map in accordance with the most recent studies and these include Breakfast Creek, Ginger Lee Creek and Loda Creek, as we've been hearing already. This study exercise has been conducted by a registered professional engineer of Queensland and it also considers projections in connection with climate change and these studies were published towards the end of last year, as councillor Davis indicated. In this respect, improved access to technology and information on the modelling of creeks and rivers, as well as up-to-date information on rainfall, helps ensure that the studies on which amendments such as these are based are well-grounded and reliable. In adopting minor V, we are ensuring the accuracy of flood catchment mapping in our planning scheme, two, the accuracy of information in our floodwise property reports and three, that residents have the best information available about flood risk so that they can plan and build accordingly. As a result of this process, affected properties could experience various changes ranging from removal of or addition to the flood planning areas or the flood, yeah, flood planning areas, or a change in the extent of the flood planning area. And that was touched upon by councillor Davis with respect to Paddington Ward in particular. So there are properties that will either be removed from the overlay, some added to it, some will have their risk modified. So around 400 properties will be removed from the flood planning area entirely. About 10,000 will be added to it. This is across the city and many others will experience some changes. Now, depending on the classification, there may be different expectations or requirements when it comes to developments. For example, ensuring the floor level of a proposed development is higher than it might otherwise be. As councillor Davis touched upon, the affected landowners will be advised via a letter and will also have a mechanism to come back to council for further inquiries about any changes that might impact them now. This particular amendment, if passed today, will come into effect on the 19th of September. I would like to just touch upon the points that councillor Chong Wah made. And it was a somewhat disjointed contribution to the debate, but what I'd like to say is they have the perception that we should be retreating from any property that's subject to flooding, whether it's low risk, high risk. They believe we should be retreating. Now, Brisbane's built on a flood plane. This notion of retreating from flood risk entirely is just not feasible. It would impact tens and possibly hundreds of thousands of residents. And perversely, the Greens, for a party that espouses the importance of affordable and social housing and keeping prices down, the very suggestion that we would retreat from flood-prone land to land that has no flood risk would have the opposite effect of moderating prices in the market. What would happen is that that land that wasn't flood-prone would become massively more expensive, which would then feed through to increased prices for homes and rents. So perversely, what they're suggesting actually runs counter to one of their key platforms. Now, from a Brisbane City Council perspective, applications that come in on land that has a flood overlay are reviewed and assessed with that in mind. And accordingly, when accordingly, when those applications are decided, there will be conditions placed on those applications to ensure that risks are engineered out through design changes and that the flooding risk is managed. So it's not as if this is just, you know, tick, 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 tick. It's a considered approach. It's reflected in city plan. It's reflected in the way the development services team assess applications and I commend this particular amendment to the chamber.
Are there any further speakers to item G? No further speakers, we'll now put that to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Dixon, seconded by the deputy mayor. Eyes to my right, nose to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells. Councillor. Collier. Clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 20 in favour.
Thank you. That has been carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. Councillor Wines.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I move the report of the Public Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 5th of August 2025, be adopted.
And I gladly second it, Madam Chairman.
It has been moved by councillor Wines and seconded by councillor Toomey that the report of the Public Transport Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 5th of August 2025, be adopted. Councillor Wines.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Can I thank councillor Toomey for his enthusiasm and it's good to see him back. He was unwell, but he's back with us and I appreciate that. Last week, the committee heard a report and an update from some of our senior council officers in the public transport section on the launch of the Brisbane Metro M1 service. On Monday, the 30th of June, I was joined by the Lord Mayor and councillors Murphy, Dixon and Huang to launch the M1 from Eight Mile Plains to Roma Street. Some people have mentioned that in our social media, we brought up that it was at 4:38 when we stepped on that a number of times.
One moment, please councillor Wines, because it is very difficult to hear you with conversations going on in the chamber. Can you please resume your seats? Councillors, if you've got conversations, take them outside the chamber. Councillor Wines.
Thank you, Madam Chair. But it was very early. It was in fact 4:38 when that first service left Eight Mile Plains and whereas we travelled into the city to find that very little was open when we got here. But we went, but it was a very, a very efficient service that got us to our destination very, very quickly. This launch, of course, represents the largest uplift to the city's public transport system in more than a decade, reshaping how we move, the reliability of that movement and the consistency of service, particularly for the South Eastern suburbs. The ambitious goal behind Metro is clear and that's to deliver an efficient, reliable and customer-focused transport option fit for future growth. So as we went through the presentation, we were presented with a range of, a range of lights that depicted for what many should be familiar with, the development of the M1 launch through the M2 launch, the 169 period, but also the BNBN consultation. So and, but also it's important for councillors to recall that over the coming weeks, we will be seeing the opening of the Adelaide Street Tunnel and another uplift in service speed and reliability. So it was important to recall that we've established a network comprising 60 chargers at our purpose-built depot, facilitating both overnight charging and maintenance of our fleet. And 15 end-to-end fast chargers have been installed at locations across the network to ensure fast and flexible upgrades, excuse me, fast and flexible refuelling, as well as resilience for the network if there are faults and failures. A modern fleet of more than 40 metro vehicles are ready to serve Brisbane's commuters. And despite claims made by the opposition that procurement of metro vehicles in combination with transport services contracts, I can assure you that our vehicle numbers are greater than they were before and our capacity is increased above that again. The vehicle is designed with accessibility, comfort and efficiency in mind. BCC implemented critical systems, including the Brisbane Metro Management System, an advanced energy management system and supervisory control and data acquisition protocols. These systems collectively support safe, efficient and sustainable operations of the metro. Key stations along the route have undergone significant upgrades to improve passenger experience and streamline services. The City Hall, King George Square Station, Culture Centre and Burandah Station now feature enhanced facilities, signage and improved accessibility. Our drive for operational readiness, excuse me, our drive for operational readiness included training 122 specialist metro operators. Collectively, operators completed more than 1,390 hours of intensive training.
Sorry councillor Wines, I do have to interrupt. Under the provisions of section 3513 of the meeting's local law, on the expiration of the period allowed for debate of committee reports, I shall now put the motions to the meeting for the adoption of any committee report not yet voted upon without further amendment or debate. So we'll now put Public Transport Committee report to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Johnston and seconded by councillor Chong Wah. Eyes to my right, nose to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells. Clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 19 in favour and 1 against.
That has been carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. We'll now put the Infrastructure Committee report to the vote. All those in favour.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Chong Wah.
Could I please take items B, C, D, F separately for voting purposes?
Seconded. Just to clarify, you want them separately?
Yes, separately, item B, C, D and F separately for voting purposes.
So we'll now put items A and E to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. We'll now put item B to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
The ayes have it. Division has been called. Division has been called and seconded by councillor Cassidy. Eyes to my right, nose to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells. Clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being fifteen in favour and six against.
That is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. We'll now put item C to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Chongwa and seconded by councillor Johnston. Eyes to my right, nose to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells. Clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being nineteen in favour and two against.
That is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. We'll now put item D to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it.
Division. Nicole?
Division. Division. Sorry.
Division called by councillor Chongwa and seconded by councillor Johnston. Eyes to my right, nose to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells. Clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being twenty in favour and one abstention.
That is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. We'll now vote on item F. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Kim. Eyes to my right, nose to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells. Clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being fifteen in favour, five against and one abstention.
That is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. We'll now put City Planning, Suburban Renewal and Economic Development Committee report to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. That is carried. We'll now put Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee report to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. That is carried. We'll now put Customer Services Committee report to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. That is carried. We'll now put Community and the Arts Committee report to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. That is carried. And we'll now put the Finance and City Governance Committee report to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. That is carried. Councillors, are there any petitions? Councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, Chair. I have petition from residents in Ninth Avenue, objecting to car parks, marked car parking, and residents in Second Avenue, calling for speed bumps on busy Second Avenue sandgoat.
Councillor Wolf.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I have a petition that is requesting that council not approve more than eight stories for a development application at 2125 Glen Road to Wong.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a petition regarding a safety island at Green Slopes from residents in Green Slopes.
Are there any other petitions? Councillor Dixon, may I have a motion for a seat of the petitions?
Chair, I move that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Second.
It has been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Strunk that all petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any statements required as a result of an Office of the Independent Assessor or councillor Ethics Committee order? We'll now move to general business. Are there any speakers? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I was to speak on two items, first being housing and the second being assaults on Brisbane City Council bus drivers. And firstly on housing, an important debate has been happening in Australia over the last few years around housing and what role does government play in that space? And we've seen at a federal level policy shifts over the years and over more than just the last few years, if you go back to the Liberal Government under Howard, who walked away from direct support for the delivery of affordable housing for over a decade, they didn't have a Housing Minister and removed $3.1 billion from social housing in that period. The Labor governments of Rudd and Gillard re-entered this space with their $6 billion social housing initiative, building 20,000 social homes and renovating thousands more. That was in part a response to the GFC, but it makes you think if we can move the dial like this during a financial crisis, surely we can during a human crisis. The Liberal Government of Scott Morrison insisted housing was just a state issue and this lack of national leadership set us on a path of disaster, one that also included the devastating politics of the Greens and LNP at a federal level, teaming up together in a coalition of chaos to block Labor's housing programme in the Senate for years. Their electoral punishment earlier this year signaled Australian soar action on housing to be more important than the LNP and Greens' political brinkmanship. The Australian Government's ambitious housing agenda now sits at $33 billion, including expanding Help to Buy, rolling out the first two rounds of the $10 billion Housing Australia Future Fund to see 18,000 social and affordable homes built and launching a $1 billion, $1 billion fund for crisis and transitional accommodation. I understand there will always be debates about what's needed, whether a package is enough, but I read something really refreshing from Rebecca Olkers, the CEO of BHC, the other day, and this is what she had to say, quoting her here. "I'm so weary of hearing commentary about whether the federal government's 1.2 million homes by 2029 target will be met or not. The fact behind this target is that the federal government is in the game. They are taking up the mantle and they are setting a vision and a light on the hill for the housing numbers we need as a nation. We need a vision. We need a big vision. We need a vision that is hard to achieve because then and only then do all stakeholders and governments, the CHPs, the funders, the private sector pull together and strive for something that will turn the tide on 40 years of underinvestment. Let's stop using energy prosecuting whether it will be reached and put that energy into forming the relationships, partnerships and streamlined mechanisms to make that 1.2 million homes happen and then some. From the social and affordable housing point of view, a predictable, funded pipeline of projects, year in, year out, underpinned by the HAF, Housing Australia Future Fund, is the right way to go. I, for one, am so pleased that the federal government has stepped into this space and into this challenge. We owe it to the hundreds of thousands Australians who struggle for a roof over their heads each and every night." I couldn't agree more with that statement. A big vision is important. It pushes government to deliver and recalibrating that delivery will happen, of course, as we get to 2029, but in a specifically Brisbane context, Olympic cities are at risk of becoming unaffordable for average wage earners forever. Brisbane, in many ways, already is, and this is affecting other council areas as well, like Ipswich, Logan, Moreton Bay and Coast Council areas too, in terms of affordability and supply. When a couple with kids earning $200,000 a year can't afford a house in Brisbane, even with a government guarantee, we know something is fundamentally wrong and that needs a very bold plan to fix it. So congratulations to our Labor government on taking these big steps. We should have, as we've discussed earlier tonight, a Lord Mayor in Brisbane who is fighting tooth and nail to see these policies succeed, but unfortunately you can't do that from Dubai, from New York, or Switzerland, or Egypt, or wherever our Lord Mayor is off to next. In terms of bus driver assaults, we had some, a very political question in Question Time today to try and score a point about a word, one particular word used in a question on notice, but what we didn't hear from the Chair of the Transport Committee is the fact that assaults, serious physical assaults on bus drivers for the period of 2025 is up almost four times on the same period as 2024. So while the Chair of the Transport Committee got up and tried to score some cheap political points today, he failed to talk about what he is actually doing to make our bus drivers safe when they go to work.
Councillor Cassidy, your time has expired. Further speakers, councillor Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I rise to speak about the citywide green bin rollout. And Madam Chair, I am very pleased to advise the chamber that as of this morning, nearly 12,500 green bins had been distributed to some of the suburbs across Brisbane. And on that, Madam Chair, I move the motion currently lying on the table in relation to green bins to be taken off the table.
Second. It has been moved by councillor Davis and seconded by councillor Hutton. No. Sorry. Councillor Adams, that the motion from 27th of May, 2025, be taken off the table. This is a procedural motion, so I now put it to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. The motion is carried. Further speakers? Oh, councillor Davis, have you finished?
Thank you, Madam Chair. From the outset, let us be very clear, this rollout is being delivered because of this administration's initiative, planning and commitment to better waste services for Brisbane. It was not Labor's motion that brought green bins to every eligible household. It is thanks to the hard work of the Shrima Council and the Chris O'Leary government. Those opposite were supportive of the Shrima Council's successful Opt-In Green Scheme with 160,000 homes signed up prior to the current rollout, and they tried to make, take credit for that, Madam Chair, and for the hard work that has gone in to preparing for this rollout. And I think we could call that classic Labor, see which direction things go and then hitch themselves to it. Well, it's lovely to have those opposite along for the ride and we're glad you're on board with this generational change upgrade to our city's waste collection services. We are committed to reducing waste sent to landfill and that's why we invest in trials and programs that show promise and quickly pivot from those that don't deliver value. The Shrima Council has been serious about reducing food and garden waste for years. Our approach includes rebates for home compost systems, sinkerators, food waste dehydrators and an investment in our community composting hubs. And of course, this landmark rollout of green lid garden waste bins is the continuation of the green bin program that was among the first in Australia. And these programs are already showing positive results and we're prepared to keep investing in what works, rather than throwing money at costly ideas that offer little value, like FOGO, which has been a regular topic visited by those across the chamber. Labor took to the last council election an unfunded, half-baked plan that would have seen red bins collected fortnightly and the city turned into an open-air compost bin. Labor would have created foul, rotting piles of food waste on our streets with no plan to manage the consequences, no infrastructure, Madam Chair, simply no idea. The Australian Labor Party and the Greens continued to peddle FOGO, desperate to force an untried and untested system which providers in Queensland cannot yet accommodate and push that on to the residents of Brisbane. FOGO really is a no-go at this point, Madam Chair, as the residents of the city of Parramatta are finding to their cost. It was an interesting article, Madam Chair, that was in the Brisbane Times and I tabled that for the benefit of councillors. The article went into great detail on the experience of Parramatta when it came to rolling out FOGO. It read that Parramatta Council launched its FOGO program in November last year, expecting to reduce landfill waste by 40%, but instead, red bin lid use has remained the same, waste going into landfill has remained the same, there's been a 53% rise in service requests for things like missed bins, staff have had to be seconded from other parts of council to help deal with the surge of those requests, and in the first six months of the program, it has cost that council more than $9 million, more than what they'd budgeted for. So, Madam Chair, the city of Parramatta is about one-fifth of the size of Brisbane City Council, so upscaled, that budget blowout here would represent a $90 million a year Labor overspend. And that for them to introduce a program that doesn't work and that residents don't want. The suggestions opposite to collect red bins once a fortnight, to fill our streets with decomposing waste, would be a gamble with rate payout dollars on a process that our communities are simply not ready for. And that awful vision was understandably rejected by the people of Brisbane and so Labor attempted a backflip just before this year's budget. Because we've been working with the state government to ensure funding from the Queensland Government's Recycling and Jobs Fund for the rollout of green bins for our garden waste after years of inaction from the former state Labor government, years of changing guidelines, shifting goalposts, years of red tape upon red tape that prevented us in many other councils from accessing vital funding. And as councillor Cassidy highlighted when moving this motion in May, the rollout will also help offset the former state Labor government's bin tax, the levy on landfill. So I'm sure those opposite will also want to congratulate the Chris O'Leary government on another example of getting things moving, getting things done, because this is a great outcome for the city, a great outcome for the rate payers of Brisbane and a great outcome for our natural environment. I move the motion now be put.
Seconded. Has been moved by councillor Davis and seconded by councillor Dixon, that the motion now be put. All those in favour say aye. All those in favour say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division. Sorry, division called by councillor Johnston. Was it seconded? Who seconded it? Councillor Johnston? Who seconded it? Councillor Chongwa, thank you. Make sure you use your mic. Eyes to my right, nose to my left, clarks please ring. Clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 15 in favour and 6 against.
That is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. Councillor Cassidy, you have right of reply.
Thanks very much, Chair. It's refreshing again to hear the LNP say the quiet stuff out loud. They are on the march to take up the mantle that they have at a state and federal level as being environmental vandals. And they're very proud about that. And there's an element, I know councillor Davis was, and other LNP councillors at the time were upset and there's some sour grapes, that we moved this motion ahead of when they were going to do their budget media round it. I understand it was the, it was the weekend before the Lord Mayor was to do the budget here in council, he had that earmarked as a media day and he was going to announce, going to announce the rollout of green bins. So we understand we sort of stunk up their week a bit by moving this motion earlier. And so they have sour grapes about it. But some of the rubbish that we just heard from councillor Davis is really quite incredible when it comes to FOGO, and particularly the, the sort of made up figures that she's throwing around about Penrith City Council's experience with FOGO. Now, I understand this is sort of up to the end of 2023, so it is slightly out of date what I have here in front of me as well. But directly from Penrith City Council, between 2009 and 2023, 358,278 tonnes of organic material was diverted from landfill. Now, we heard councillor Davis say how much smaller Penrith City Council is than Brisbane City Council. So if you think, I think she said it was one-fifth the size, I believe she said. I'll take a word for it, really shouldn't, I know, but I will in this instance. So you think about the amount of organic waste that will be diverted from Brisbane landfill if we had a council that was visionary and that over a 20-year period, instead of being environmental vandals and having this, this program of greenwashing, we actually had some action on these things, we would have an industry. And it's not just about composting anymore. I've met with proponents of biofuels, companies that do biofuels, and you know what they are screaming out for? Organic material, FOGO. They want food organics, garden organics to use as biofuels. And you know what the result of generating clean electricity using biofuels is as a secondary product, compost as well. So there's, there's industry out there screaming out for a council leader to stand up and get themselves on the sticky paper and actually lead on this issue, rather than the environmental vandals we have in the LNP. Now, under the previous Labor government, and I think this, this came in several years ago, was the waste levy to stop interstate dumpsters coming into Brisbane and using, and using dumps up here. That was well aired. That's, that's been around for a very long time. And there was a package of support put in place for councils to offset a large proportion, initially all of the waste levy, with a forewarning, with this Lord Mayor and this Environment Committee Chair forewarned and told for years they needed to get their act together to bring in some scheme to reduce the amount of organic material particularly going into landfill to reduce the burden on rate payers. For years and years and years, the state government said to council, you need to find a transition plan for this. So they were warned for years and what did they do, Chair? They rolled out a, a trial of 3,000 bins, I think, to pay some lip service, then that got cut and they cut that entirely. They accessed some funding to purchase green bins from the previous state government's program. So many, apparently the Lord Mayor said you could see them from space. And then he denied their existence entirely a week later and pretended there was nothing to see here. And we understand that the LNP went cap in hand up to the LNP at a state level and they said to them, please, 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 we're your political friends, they're the same party, please, please continue the support for councils in offsetting the waste levy charge. The LGAQ confirmed this was the case, that councils had requested that of the Chrissifouli government. And what was their answer? Anyone? No. The answer was no. The answer was no support from the LNP state government to the LNP Brisbane City Council. So I guess, you know, the advocacy of this Lord Mayor to his LNP colleagues is pretty weak and non-existent and, and the environmental vandals are let loose again. There's major changes coming as well. I understand 4,000 households will see their bin day changed as a result of this.
Councillor Cassidy, your time has expired. We will now put the motion to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those against, no. The noes have it. Further general business? Is there any further general business? Councillor Hutton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to speak about the significant milestone that happened over the weekend, not just for Brisbane, but Australia's history. And that was 50 years of the first Vietnamese arriving on our shores. In 19, April 1975, the fall of Saigon tour families from their homes stripped many of their freedoms and dignity and left, left them facing a future of uncertainty. In the midst of fear and loss, thousands made the courageous decision to seek a new life, one of hope, safety and opportunity. On the 9th of August 1975, 326 Vietnamese refugees stepped onto Brisbane soil. At the Vietnamese Women's Association anniversary event last weekend, 12 of these original refugees were acknowledged and honoured in person. They spoke of the first month in Australia, arriving at the Waco migrant camp, living in tiny timber army huts with shared facilities. Those early days were tough. Language barriers, cultural differences and the daunting challenge of starting again would have defeated many, but not the Vietnamese. They also remembered the kindness that they were met with. People like the late Dr Kong Bui Am, one of Waco's first Vietnamese translators, who went on to serve as the community's president for 40 years. And organizations like St Vincent de Paul and the Salvation Army, they were the hands that helped build an understanding of this community and laid the foundations for the community that we see today. The Jubilee event here at City Hall brought the entire community together in honour of this milestone. One of my favorite moments was hearing from Manh and Jaguar Nguyen, third generations Vietnamese Australians, sharing their family's story with an unmistakable Aussie accent. They said, our parents' generation carried the torch, combining the Vietnamese work ethic with the Australian spirit of having a go. They became doers, builders and contributors. Every generation stands on the shoulders of those who came before them. Their family's journey from a tiny wooden boat in the South China Sea, arriving in Australia with virtually nothing, to run a café in Everton Park that grew into the landmark Sing Sing Restaurant in Annalee. That restaurant became more than a business, it was a gathering place, a cultural anchor and a symbol of the life they had built here. From the early days, the Vietnamese community had flourished, building businesses, raising families, educating children and enriching Brisbane's cultural life. The Vietnamese spirit of resilience and hard work has blended beautifully with the Australia's give it a go ethos, shaping a stronger and more vibrant city. That same spirit shone brightly at the Vietnamese Women's Association anniversary. Six remarkable women took the stage, each sharing a deeply personal journey, stories of courage, resilience and hope. They came from different backgrounds, were from different generations, yet their experience echoed the same truth, that from hardship can grow extraordinary strength. That evening also marked the launch of a new book, A Journey to Call Home, To Call Australia Home, a collection of 17 powerful stories from refugee Vietnamese women captured, capturing decades of journeys, sacrifices and triumphs. This book is more than words on a page, it is a gift to future generations, preserving the lived experience of those who paved the way. I want to record my thanks to Mai Chu Nguyen, the President of the Vietnamese Women's Association and the Incredible Committee, for their dedication and the years that have brought this book to life. The transcribing, translating and editing of these stories is truly a gift. I want to thank those women who shared their stories despite the tears, pain and anguish. They have brought their stories into the public sphere for generations to understand and appreciate. I also want to say a huge thank you to Q1 and the Vietnamese community for their incredible work and the efforts they have put in to these events. 50 years on, the Vietnamese community is not just part of Brisbane, you have built, you are at its core, at its heart. You have helped us build a city, woven your cultural traditions and values into its fabric. I'm so very proud to represent this vibrant, hardworking and generous community. You have not only made Australia your home, you have truly made it better.
Councillor Hutton, your time has expired. Further speakers? Councillor Gibney.
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to take a moment to share my heartfelt gratitude to the Bayside community. Over a month ago, my family's world was turned upside down when my husband Ben, a fit 42-year-old tradie who doesn't smoke, barely drinks and is honestly the best bloke you'll ever meet, was struck down by a sudden and severe spinal cord infection. There was no warning and no confirmed cause. In just 24 hours, Ben went from being completely fine to losing all movement in his body. He was placed into an induced coma in the ICU to stabilise him and continues to face challenges since, including having a track ear inserted and learning to communicate through mouthing words and using a speaking valve. Ben has regained some movement in one arm and his, in, in his left arm and a, and a small amount in his right arm. And the other day, thankfully, we saw a few flickers in his legs. Ben is working incredibly hard each day with his medical team. He progressed, the progress is slow, but it is progress and we hold on to hope for his recovery, even though the outcome is still unknown. His team at the Princess Alexandra Hospital have been nothing short of extraordinary and will be forever grateful to them, especially the ICU staff who went above and beyond in Ben's three weeks of care there. Through all this, we have been completely overwhelmed by the kindness and generosity of the Bayside community. The meals left quietly at our door, the cards, flowers and snacks delivered from community organizations, local businesses and residents, the phone calls, messages and offers to help with our kids and the garden. People, some who we've never even met, have stopped to simply ask, how is your husband? I am grateful for the understanding, for the understanding when I have to leave events early, my kids need me. And I know the community supports that. To my incredible mother-in-law, Erna, who sits with Ben every day when I can't be there, you are the kindest, most generous person I know. And I understand that seeing your son like this has been so difficult, but we will get through this together. To my sister Tori, you are, I asked you to run my community event, which you were happy to step in. And then when the doctors delivered the news that Ben was most likely not to make a full recovery, I needed you and you came. Thank you. This has reaffirmed to me that living in Winhamanley is more than, they are more than just suburbs, we are a village. And when someone in that village is in need, the people rally. That sense of connection has been an incredible source of strength for our family. And I still don't know, while we still don't know exactly what the future will look like, I do know this, whatever lies ahead, we won't be facing it alone. To Team Shrinna, thank you for the calls, the messages, the deliveries and the funny memes. It has kept us going these past few weeks. To my past work colleagues at Moreton Bay Boys College and to the parents in Charlie's class who purchased an iPad for Ben so he can fill in the time at the hospital, we thank you for your generosity. To my ward team, Lisa, for your kindness and the meals, I am so thankful. Simone, thank you for taking on more of these parts this past month. And to Tony, I know this has meant more work for you. Our ward office is always busy and you've stayed late and worked weekends without complaint. You've become family to me. And even my house guest, Katie. Please also thank your family, Bruce, Sienna and Lachlan, for stepping in at events like the park opening and the Winham Fringe Community Day. I know that they didn't sign up for countless hours of community volunteering, but they did it anyway. To a local volunteer, Troy Spencer, who gave his time and expertise when Ben couldn't on Community Day, moving bales of hay, marquees and stringing lights. You joined our youth army and now you've become a friend. I thank you. To Tim Creeper from Winham State High School, you and your students round the stage like pros and your family was the first to offer us a meal. I'll never forget your kindness. Finally, I want to make one important call to action. Please, if you are able, donate blood or plasma. Ben's treatment relied on more than 60 donations in the ICU in his first week. If you've ever wondered whether giving blood really makes a difference, I can tell you it does. Ben and I gave blood for years and more recently, we haven't prioritized it and I know we both will now. Being afraid of needles is no excuse. If you can give blood, you should. We need to move away from a society of me and move to a society of we. To everyone who has reached out, helped or kept us in your thoughts, thank you. It is a privilege to represent such a compassionate, generous and united community. Please keep Ben in your thoughts and prayers. He is strong and I know keeping positive and being surrounded by love makes a world of difference. Thank you.
Any further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Thank you. I'm so sorry to hear that and I certainly wish your family all the best, councillor Gibney. I rise to speak on some local issues in Tennyson Ward. Firstly, I just want to say that we've had some really lovely events that have been happening in the ward, but I particularly want to make mention of the formal launch we had of Erna Brazia Park last Sunday. We're Sherwood Neighbourhood Watch number one. Now, as most councillors know, we don't have a lot of parks in Brisbane that are named after women. Increasingly, there are more because there's a bit more awareness on the need to do it. Erna Brazia was absolutely not a person who would ever have thought she would have a park named after her. She was an extraordinary mother and active community volunteer and she was a founding member and coordinator of Sherwood Neighbourhood Watch. And she only eased off in her mid-80s as she became a little bit unwell. So she did more than 30 years on our local neighbourhood watch in Sherwood. I was honoured that so many people turned out to be part of the celebration on Sunday. It's an event that Erna, well, Erna and I started. She came to me sort of 17 years ago and said, Nicole, I want to do a little event. And in what is Strickland Terrace Park, which joins Erna Brazia Park, we've won a local event, either a jumping castle or a clown or, you know, activities on the lawn and a barbecue for the past pretty much 17 years. And this year, we did it around the corner in Erna Brazia Park and we all had a wonderful time. So I just would like to acknowledge the fact that all of us have these extraordinary people who work behind the scenes in our community to make our neighbourhoods and suburbs and community life even better. They just help, they don't expect anything in return. And I would just like to acknowledge Mrs Erna Brazia and her family and acknowledge this wonderful park in Sherwood that is named in her honour. And a big thank you to Sherwood Neighbourhood Watch and Sherwood Police who've been very supportive of this process. And I just want to thank everybody who came along and note that we just have this wonderful new park. Now, on less happy issues, I don't know what has gone wrong with council in the past. Look, it's, it's been a slow and steady decline over many years, but we are to the point in and steady decline over many years, but we are to the point in my ward where basic repair jobs are going unactioned for years. Now, last week, the Lord Mayor stood up when I asked him a question about a footpath in Sherwood and said, oh, well, I'm sure it's been fixed. I very helpfully posted some photos and a video about it, and, you know, it's stuck up like this, it's been patched partially, that's one of three sections in a block that is in the same condition. It was patched, I'm sorry, it was patched several years ago, and council's never returned to do the proper work. It is dangerous, it is a trip hazard, it leads to the train station, the shops and local schools. There's no timeframe to do it, there's no money attached to it, there's not even a department in council anymore that actually does this work. There's some people buried down in the bottom of infrastructure somewhere, maybe who might be able to do it. But that's one of any number of projects in my ward. And the other one that I'm going to mention, because it is shocking, is for the past 13, nearly 14 months, there's been a damaged stormwater gully pit on Oxley Road on the frontage of Dunlop Park. The concrete has collapsed, there is metal sticking out of the metal that forms the frame for the gully pit itself. There's even the Make Safe stuff council put around, it's been knocked over and lost and moved. But 14 months on, there's still no plan to fix this damaged stormwater pit. It's on the frontage of a park, it adjoins Dunlop Memorial Pool, and it is on the walking path to Corinda State School, and it's right near our crossing point. It's dangerous. It is dangerous. It is unsafe, and the fact that council has not fixed it after 14 months, just, it's unfathomable that the Lord Mayor of this city is too busy off in Paris, LA to fix anything.
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Marks?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I rise briefly to speak about the National Convention, or National General Assembly that I attended in Canberra of June of this year. I've been fortunate enough to go down a few times, and this particular time, it was right in the middle of budget, so I was actually the only attendee from Brisbane City Council this year. There was a number of speakers. Firstly, there was obviously Her Excellency, the Honourable Sam Mostyn. It was actually her second anniversary of her first official speech, which she gave to the Government Assembly last year. We also had a gentleman by the name of Stephen Strela, and he's the former Facebook CEO for Australia and New Zealand, where he started the tour from the Quirky startup to media and technology titan that it is today. Mark Burris was also another speaker. There was quite a few, a mixed bag of different speakers, and it's always great to catch up with other councillors and councils and see what's happening across the country. Previously, most of the conversations at these things have been about the management of bats and where they were on the agenda and how we manage them. Those conversations have now moved on to mainly about housing and funding. There were over 100 motions were put forward by the various councils across Australia. The motions that were about the same issues were put forward as a block for debate and voting, but also, but all BCC motions were passed without a great deal of debate, I'm happy to announce, and I was able to report back to all the chairs who put motions forward, that they all passed successfully. As I mentioned, this year's particular one is about funding, in particular a funding arrangement called financial assistance grants. Now, as you know, in council, we all love our acronyms, so for a number of years, it was always referred to as the FAGs. Then last year, we were given the direction from the federal government, it was no longer to be called that, it had to be called financial assistance grants. And I know that we were promised 1% for funding to councils as part of that financial assistance grant. However, this has never ever been achieved. As I said, it's been on the agenda for a couple of years. In June, there was a question from a council asking directly to the minister, did they have a plan to ever achieve that 1% funding arrangement for councils as was promised? They were told unequivocally no, there was no plan to ever make that happen, so I'm potentially going to refer to those grants now as the FA grants. Thank you.
Any further speakers? Councillor Strunk?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Listen, I'll rise to speak on a couple of events, that, one's about to happen tomorrow actually, which is the Grand Avenue ECA Day. It's the school's fete that they run every year during ECA Day, and I believe Chindali State School does the same in the Chambrie Ward. It's a great day. They have probably 50 or 60 stalls, rides for the kids, all pretty low cost, and of course, the showbang truck shows up. So they don't actually have to go out to the ECA to actually have an ECA. So this is something that the school has been doing, as I say, for probably 20-odd years now, and I'm always very happy to support school fates, as we all are. And unfortunately, not all schools do fates, you know, so it's a big ask, it's a big commitment from schools to do something like this. It takes probably a good six months to organise. Parking is always a premium, so they try to manage that as best they can, because there's not a lot of internal parking, it's all around the streets, so that's always a challenge as well. But for the most part, over the years that I've been councillor, that I've been going, they've achieved the, been able to manage that parking issue very well. The other item is, there was a couple that actually just celebrated their 60th wedding anniversary, and this was probably the first 60th wedding anniversary certificate that I've done for a couple, Anne and Michael, and they're two icons of Anala, they're a member of a couple of seniors groups, and they were absolutely thrilled, of course, to receive their congratulatory letter and certificate, of course, from the King, the Prime Minister, the Governor, the Governor General, and all those people, and of course, the Speaker of the House, and of course, the Anala member for Anala as well, and the lonely councillor. Not quite as lucky, but anyways, and I said, well, listen, you know, I've got to ask you, how have you been able to, you know, stay together, married happily for 60 years? And Michael looked at me and said, I keep the wife happy. He says, happy wife, happy life. And it's an old saying, but it's very true. But I think it's the case that they really got a little bit serious and say, listen, we just listen to one another, right? Less talking, more listening, more understanding, and that's how they've been able to have 60 happy-filled years of marriage. Thank you, Chair.
Any further speakers? Councillor Chong Hua?
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak on Fogo, just because the debate got shut down, so I thought I'd just add my contribution. And I thought it's pertinent because of the other conversation we had about climate change and flood maps and how our residents are suffering from the lack of action when it comes to climate. So I just want to say, council did roll out a trial of curbside food, organic, garden organic collection services, but it was cancelled. It was a step in the right direction for a responsible organic waste manager. So LNP cutting its funding is completely short-sighted. From memory, council expenses on waste have blown out to an additional 57 million, maybe more. So cancelling the Fogo programme is going backwards, an unsustainable city. Like many of these decisions, LNP are prioritising short-term gain for long-term loss. Food waste makes up around a quarter of Brisbane's general waste, last I looked, all of which ends up in landfill. So while this programme is cancelled, council are creating a bigger problem in the long run. So this decision to spend more on acquiring more landfill sites for unsustainable, old-fashioned waste management is backwards for Brisbane. Organic waste is one of the biggest culprits of human-induced global warming, and here our council, LNP council, are rejecting meaningful action. I just wanted to contribute that because I felt like we were, I don't like having a debate shut down. Thanks very much.
Any further speakers? Thank you, councillors. There's no further business, so I declare the meeting closed.